We'll call this meeting the order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Please note that the Copy of Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
(Inaudible).
We'll get started with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting set Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, as a date for a hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of augmented property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second?
Shall move.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we have our resolutions C through L. I have been informed by Mr. Goodwillie that the individuals involved with Resolution C and H with the Danish organization would like to comment, but they can't be here today. They can come at the next meeting.
Yes, Mike Goodwillie, Douglas County Assessor, Registered in his office. Yeah, the Danish Veniferining Home reached out to me. They'd like to speak on both items C, which is a proposed denial of their real property exemption application, and H, which is the companion that deals with their business personal property and are unable to attend today. So they've asked to lay those two over out of those resolutions. The other heads up I want to give you is I know we're going to have speakers on items C and H, the denials as well. So in order to give them a fair chance to speak, let's not be too hasty.
Sounds good. In that case, um, yes, Mr. Morgan, or Christian Morgan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
Hold on, hold on, Christian Morgan. We gotta get your mic on.
Sit down.
Perfect. I was just wondering, and it's another time and it may be on the agenda at some point, as I understand it, if your property is totally destroyed, as it was, the statute will not allow us to move forward and say, hey, because your property is...
There's, there's, Commissioner, there's, I don't mean to interrupt, there's a mechanism, okay? Until a few years ago, that was absolutely right. The property was valued as it existed on January 1st. So if you had a beautiful mansion and a tornado took it away, that was too bad. But it worked the other way, too. If you had a vacant lot and then put up a beautiful mansion, January 1st was the date. A few years ago, the legislature, the legislature passed a statute that said if you sustained substantial damage to your property due to a calamity, which includes tornadoes, floods, fires, things like that, you can apply, you can file an application, you file it both with our office and the clerk's office, and, and seek a reduction in value. I know further down...
Gentlemen, I'm sorry. That, we actually have a full presentation on destroyed real property, so I'm gonna stop us there.
Further down, further down, Dan S. is gonna make the presentation.
So for sure, we want to pull out C and H if we do a motion to block the others, but to vote on them and block, that is. Is there anybody else here to talk about any of the other resolutions, just from my knowledge?
Commissioner, the only thing we need to pull from C and H is the Danish organization. The others can go forward.
Okay. And just give me which resolution you want to talk about in a bit.
Sure. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, here on behalf of Heartland Family Service, the Nebraska Family Works, denial under item C. I'd also like to be able to address that one, please.
It's also under item C. Okay. In that case, thank you very much for that. I can take a motion to approve all items minus C and H, and those can be taken separately. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Any comment on all items minus C and H? If not, one vote.
All right, one moment, please. Then could I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I get the motion and second again on that?
I believe it's motion by Morgan, second by Rogers.
The opposite.
Or reverse, yeah. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Thank you. And you can vote now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. So the motion that at least the individuals involved with C and H would like is to table it to our next meeting, that motion still allows for discussion, so we can still have the commentary by Mr. Levy as well. In our next meeting, it's not till June 4th due to Memorial Day. So is there such a motion to table till June 4th, C and H?
(Inaudible).
Just C and H, those particular ones?
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner, I, here's, here's my suggestion. If you can manage to remove the Danish Veniferings, one of the organizations in both C and H, and let, without those, without that entity, those resolutions go forward. I know Mr. Levy wants, he's here and wants to speak on C. I think there's a gentleman from one of the other organizations that would like to speak on C. It, I don't think there's a reason we couldn't deal with the remaining organizations and just take the Danish organization on the 4th.
Okay. In that case, if we just want to motion second the main resolutions and then we can amend as we go. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. All right, let's just talk about C and H in general and then see what we need to amend.
Mr. Chair, this is to approve C and H at the moment?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Levy, if you want to come up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning again. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of Heartland Family Service, which is the operator of the Nebraska Family Works program. The Nebraska Family Works program is a building at about 48th and Sailor Street that's been operating since about 2015 and has been tax exempt, property tax exempt, all of that time. This, I think with this being the four-year deeper review, this has now been marked for denial. I am here to ask the Commission to maintain the property tax exemption on this project, and let me get into that a little bit, if you would. So I'm gonna read part of an email from John Genetta, who was the CEO of Heartland Family Service, which again was the developer and is the operator of the Nebraska Family Works project. The Nebraska Family Works program is long-term residential treatment for pregnant women and women with children. The children live with their moms during treatment, and part of the therapeutic services provided focus on parenting, attachment, and healing any trauma that children may have experienced. With long-term residential treatment, the longer we can keep a client in the program, the better. Here's a link to an article that's based on research of programs like the Nebraska Family Works program for parenting and pregnant women. It demonstrates six months is the minimum necessary time for these programs to have the desired effect, six months of residence at the, at the facility for the mother and the child. With our clients, most of whom are addicted to methamphetamine, nine months to a year length of stay is better. This is the facility that we're talking about here. The denial for exemption, or the recommendation for denial from exemption, comes about from the fact that one of the mechanisms that Heartland Family Service used to finance this project is low-income housing tax credits. At some level, this is low-income housing. At a whole other level, much more practically speaking, this is what I just read to you. This is a critically important facility for the treatment of pregnant women, women with infants, and, and with drug addiction issues, serious drug addiction issues. I don't disagree with, with Mr. Goodwillie in the assessor's office that in, in some cases, our Nebraska Supreme Court has said that the involvement of the private low-income housing tax credit investor makes a project that is purely low-income housing so that it cannot meet the statutory test for exemption because there is gain or profit to the owner or user, that owner being the partner, the tax credit investor partner. But let me read you something here in this case from the operating agreement for this particular project. This is, to me, this is, this is dispositive. Legal title to the apartment complex. So again, Nebraska Family Works fundamentally is an apartment complex, but it has tremendous amounts of services and a very specific clientele. It's providing a service that otherwise government would have to provide through private means. One of the means of doing that is, is low-income housing tax credit financing. We're about 10 of the 15 years of, of that into it, by the way, so that will go away in another few years.
Yeah, one minute, Mr. Levy.
Okay, thank you. Legal title to the apartment complex shall, at all times the company is in existence, be in the name of the company, Nebraska Family Works. That's the company, that's the entity, that's the nonprofit entity that is providing the services that I'm talking about. So again, legal title to the apartment complex shall be in the name of the company, and no member, so not the tax credit entity member, individually shall have any ownership interest in the apartment complex. So the operating agreement itself says that Nebraska Family Works, the nonprofit service provider, owns this facility. The tax credit investor pursuant to the terms of the operating agreement itself shall not have any ownership interest in the apartment complex. I would ask you to see the practical reality of this and reinstate and grant this exemption for this property. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, let Mr. Goodwillie comment, then I'll jump to the Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners. This recommendation our office is making base, is based solely on the ownership of the entity and not its use. We don't quibble with the need for a facility like what Mr. Levy is talking about. But in terms of the ownership test, state law says the property must be owned by a religious, educational, charitable, or cemetery organization, or an organization for its exclusive benefit. And here is what's in The investor member, which is our quibble here, that, that one of the members of this LLC is a private investment group. The investor member and special member are hereby admitted as members of the company and shall have the interest specified in Schedule A attached here, too. When you go to Schedule A of the operating agreement, the interests in the company are laid out this way. The managing member is Heartland Family Services. They have a 0.01% interest in the LLC. The investor member, MHEG Fund 42 LP, has a 99.99% interest in the LLC. So since the LLC owns the property, and you have something other than a religious, educational cemetery, or charitable organization that is, has a 99.99% interest in it, I think you're hard pressed to say that this LLC is for the exclusive benefit of the charity. The investors invest in these kinds of projects as a, as a vehicle to generate ideally some profit, but even if not, the tax credits are worth it to them, and it's essentially a private investment vehicle. And while I sympathize with the use of the property, the other way to look at this is a private investment group with almost the entire interest in the LLC that's kind of piggybacking on the work that Heartland Family Services is doing in this location. And that was the reason that we recommended denial of the application.
Thank you. We're gonna jump to comments from Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
In a second, Mr. Levy.
This has been going on for some years?
It has.
Have they, have they had exemptions in previous years?
They, they have, and, and I'll take responsibility for that. We were not as diligent as we should have been in digging into the makeup of the LLC.
I appreciate it. How long has it been going on?
Mid 2000, yeah, basically.
So, this building, I presume it's wholly used for this purpose, for these pregnant women's residential treatment, is, doesn't this come under the exemption for entirely use for a charitable purpose?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a five-part test, Commissioner. The, the property must be owned by a charitable organization or an organization for its exclusive benefit. The property must be used for charitable, educational, religious, or cemetery purpose. It cannot be used for gain or profit to the owner or the user. The organization owning the property cannot discriminate in its membership or, or operation based on things like race and ethnicity. And the property cannot be used for the sale of alcoholic beverages for more than 20 hours a week. I would suggest to you that while they may pass several of those tests, they don't pass the ownership test because of the makeup of the LLC.
Okay. So the fact that there is ownership, some ownership by the nonprofit does not qualify them?
Well, I, I think the key phrase is the property must be owned by an organization set up for the exclusive benefit of that charitable, religious, educational, or cemetery organization. And I have trouble seeing how 0.01% interest in the LLC is for the exclusive benefit of that nonprofit.
Sure. But the law doesn't specify a percent ownership.
No, no, it does not.
Ownership, okay.
Exclusive, the, the, the ownership must be in the nonprofit or an organization for its exclusive benefit.
Okay. David, for a second?
Yes, sir.
So this, and I didn't get the entire name of the NAGL, the private...
MHEG. It stands for Midwest Housing Equity Group.
Okay.
They're a group that invests in low-income housing tax credits.
And they are a for-profit organization?
They're a for-profit organization. They, as Mr. Goodwillie pointed out, the operating agreement says that they have a 99% ownership in the project company, the company NFW, that owns the property and operates the property for the exclusive charitable use. So part of this is how far back are we gonna look in the LLCs, right?
I just want to get real quick, because we're...
And, and I just, one, one point on that, though, to, so yes, in the operating agreement, they have a 99% ownership, and, and the only reason for that is because they get the tax attributes. That's why they're a 99% owner.
Right, right.
But the entire responsibility to act like an owner, to maintain the facility, to operate the facility, to provide the treatment, that's all Nebraska Family Works.
And I got a couple of questions on that. So, the, the profit that they receive, do you have a dollar amount for what that, that's worth to them?
I don't.
Okay. And...
20 seconds.
To the residents, and I'll, we'll come back if we run out of time here. Do the NFW LLC pay rent to them for this?
No. No, their, their, their rent, they being Midwest Housing Equity Group, is that...
Well, I mean, the, the Heartland Family subsidiary, which I guess is this NFW.
NFW, yes.
Okay.
We'll come back, Commissioner Kavanaugh. We'll do Friend and Rogers. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe for Mike or David, if you wanted to opine, both of you, let's assume, let's assume for just a moment, and maybe we would have to assume this going forward, but let's assume for a moment that the ownership test passes the legal hurdles, the legal requirements, the legal muster. Is there, is there a way that this practical ownership could be transferred in a timely manner before, I, I mean, from a negotiation standpoint, to actually get this effectively done in a, in a...
David might be better able to answer this, this question than I, but my sense of it is it needs to be in this format so that the investors can keep and maintain the tax credits, or which, which were their motivation for investing in the project in the first place.
And I agree with that. I, I don't know what their motivation was. I'm sure it was the tax credits, but maybe they had a soft spot for this kind of treatment as well. I don't think we just should assume it's entirely not benevolent. But, but Mr. Goodwillie is right. For the tax credit period, they, the tax credit investor, this ownership structure has to remain the way it is, or there would be recapture of the tax credits, and it would be a, a huge mess.
Okay. Well, and my final point, if there is one here, would be that that's, this is probably the key question. I mean, I mean, this, again, if, if this passes the, if we're assuming that that, that the ownership hurdle is legitimate, if we're gonna do that right now, that would be the key question. I mean, and again, losing those tax credits, I, you know, I don't know how to rectify that.
You can't lose the tax credits, but losing the tax exemption is material as well. These facilities are not easy to run. I mean, Nebraska Family Works and Heartland Family Service are using every available means to operate this facility. There's philanthropy, there's federal grants, there's Department of Health and Human Services grants, there's probably Douglas County money going to them. And, you know, so if, if we look at these tax credits and we penalize them for using an available financing mechanism, it's a public-private partnership. And, and I'm not sitting here saying that, even though I think there's an argument that just simple low-income housing that uses tax credits should be exempt from property taxes, because that's hard to provide, too. This is not that. This is not your run-of-the-mill low-income housing project by any stretch of the imagination. And so I ask you, as, as Commissioners, to, to look at that and, and to really consider that. And, and I'm not trying to ignore the legal point, too. I do think that what I read you from the operating agreement says that Nebraska Family Works is the owner of this property. They meet the ownership test.
Uh, thank you, David. Final, final, final question, and, and Mike, maybe you could opine on this. If, if, how many other, what would be an educated guess, how many other instances of, of this ownership intangible could potentially be an issue? So not, let's forget about these guys for a second. Let's talk about other entities over the last 10 years that could be, or, or is that, or is that just a crystal ball you don't have?
Well, let me, let me get at at least some of what you're asking. This sort of LLC structure to own and operate a building for a strategy, or for a, a nonprofit, has become more and more common. And as that has occurred, we have typically asked for the, I'm sorry, for the...
I'm out of time.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you. We'll come back if you'd like. Commissioner Rogers?
Okay, Mike, so, help me. Is there any precedent that, okay, we did it for the last 10 years, now you found it? It's just, okay, you found it, now that you found it, you know better you do better.
Well, no, the, the way the, the way the exemption structure is set up is in years divisible by four. Those are full application years. I think David said it best. Those are deep dive years, where the form is longer, it asks for more information. I don't know why we didn't get this information sooner. I guess we've become more sophisticated, and we've seen more entities using LLCs, and have become smarter about asking for the operating agreement. I know when this, David and I had some discussions when this was first starting up, and those discussions centered almost entirely on the use of the property. I don't recall having any discussions about how the property was actually going to be, the ownership structure was going to look like. And I think I made an assumption that I probably shouldn't have made. So as the 24 applications came in, when we saw LLCs as part of an ownership situation, we asked for the operating agreement and looked at them. And in most of these instances, to, to wed your point to the Commissioner Friend's question, in most instances when we see LLC ownership, that Oprah operating agreement tells us that the sole member of that LLC is the nonprofit organization. So for example, I know there's a church out in Elkhorn whose building is owned by an LLC, and you look at the operating agreement, and the sole member is, you know, XYZ Church. That's not this. You don't have this, this 99% ownership interest in the, or interest in the LLC.
Mike, can I, can I stop you there just for the sake of time? I got that.
I apologize.
Okay, but let me, because let me, because this one I want to ask you. So, is the test, so based on the test, it seems like there's not this hard, there's, there's nothing particular that says somewhere, a backstop that says you gotta have 100%. Technically, it sounds like you have a percentage you good, but this is the question I have. Is, does the test say something about profit? Because David made the statement that...
Well, the, yes, the third...
You know, because the question I have is, is the issue not ownership, is the issue profit? And I'm trying to have a, a question to say, what precedence does it set? Because, okay, say, this the new way, you use the, you use this agreement to get the taxes away, what happens with the profit? And does the rule have a profit line?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. The third part of the test talks about the property not being used for gain or profit by the owner or the user. So I suppose, to the extent that MHEG with a 99.99% ownership interest in NFW LLC is a for-profit entity, if I recall from, from the operating agreement, if there are, if there are net profits, and I have no idea if they are, but if there are net profits, those would go to these, those, those, the investor class first with the 99.99% interest. Do they have operating profits? I don't know. Is the object of the investor gain or profit? Sure.
Yeah, if you want to go to 20, because make me comfortable with, because right now, the profit is the bond.
So, so if this facility were to have an operating profit, that profit goes right back into the facility. The recipient, the owner of that profit, if you will, right? You can own money, is NFW LLC, which is the nonprofit entity that actually owns and operates the facility. The investor members are not entitled to any profit. They're only entitled to the tax attributes being the federal tax credits. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Levy. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Okay. So, essentially, the Midwest Housing Development Group has a 99-plus percent ownership right to this property, and they get compensated in terms of this tax credit. Mr. Goodwillie, how much is the tax credit?
I don't have a dollar amount.
How much is the property worth?
I think the organization indicated that they thought it was worth 839, no, $8,395,000.
It's a, it's a fairly large apartment building.
It's, it's pretty massive.
Okay. And how many women does it serve?
This, I believe that it is in the range of 60 at any given time. That's going back from when we worked on this 10 years ago, but that's the number that's in my head.
Sure. You know, I can see the sentiment that you bring forward here, and I guess my question would be, does this group, Midwest Housing Development Group, do this elsewhere? Is this their only one of these?
No, this, this is what they do for projects, all kinds of projects.
And the same 99.9...
Yes, that, it is structured that way. One, one way to think about it, though, is...
No, 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 I, I, we got time here, so...
Sure.
The, the cost of the property, though, running the property, the operational cost, is carried by the nonprofit. Is that right?
100%.
And they pay no rent to the Midwest Housing Development Group?
Midwest Housing Equity Group is like a lender, but they're an equity investor because they get the tax credits instead of having a lien.
It'd be helpful to know how much that we're talking about in terms of either a tax credit or tax that this would be appraised for. And neither one of you can give us that number, right? number, right?
I mean, you have the.
Would it be equivalent to the average property tax on an $8.3 million property in Douglas County?
Yes. Right, unless there were a partial exemption for some reason.
Okay. Any ballpark on what that would be, Mike?
What, I'm sorry?
Well, $8.3 million property, what would they pay in an annual property tax in Douglas County?
2%. I think, I think Commissioner Morgan is the numbers wizard.
About 160,000, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
And has this been going on for the whole 10 years that this arrangement's been in place?
The exemption hasn't been in place for the, the entire time. Mr. Goodwilly is right. He and I talked about it at the time the project came online. We talked about the use and, and I think agreed that it was a charitable use, and it's been exempt ever since.
What we're talking about is, what is it worth to Douglas County to have 60 pregnant mothers who have drug and alcohol problems treated? And granted that there's going to be some property tax gain, it's like an equitable argument. What's it worth to us to have those mothers get treatment? And, okay, maybe this doesn't meet every exact criteria, although I think you could make an argument that any participation with law doesn't say that it's got to be a particular percentage. Is it the right thing to do? I mean, I, I really think treating pregnant mothers who have drug and alcohol problems is a very right thing to do. And if it costs us $160,000 in tax, property tax, a year, well.
It would cost.
A way out of whack situation. It might not be 100% according to Hoyle, but I, I understand your argument.
And, and it would cost Douglas County, with all respect, I think, a lot more than $160,000 a year to operate this facility, right? That's partly how you become a tax-exempt entity under federal law, is show that you're fulfilling functions government would otherwise fulfill. That's happening here. Thanks.
We'll jump to Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David, Mr. Levy, you gave the length of the program, but I forgot. What's the time length of the program?
In terms of how long women are.
Like how a woman.
An individual?
Uh huh.
Between six months and a year.
And the ownership, you state, you also made a comment that on whatever document you had, the sole ownership is the Heartland Family Service.
It's Nebraska Family Works LLC, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Heartland Family Service.
Got it.
And carries, makes use of Heartland Family Service as federal tax exemption.
Okay.
That's a federally tax-exempt nonprofit entity, NFW.
it's a program. We're serving women for six months to a year to stabilize, get them in recovery, make sure babies are good, make sure mama's good, and then they, then they move on, which is different than, in my opinion, low-income housing, where they are, these apartments building would be someplace where they live for infinity. So, does that play any role in the tax-exempt requirements of the law?
Happy to. About every 20 years, the State Supreme Court says, hey, we really meant it when we said that low-income housing, even when owned by nonprofits standing alone, does not qualify for exemption. That said, there are cases out there that leads one, lead one to the conclusion that if you have sort of housing plus some significant element of service, that property can pass the use test. So, for example, nursing homes are exempt because they provide hospital-like care to people that can't care for themselves. Our Supreme Court has said basically the same thing about assisted living facilities. There's even a very paternalistic case from the early 60s involving short-term housing at the YWCA in Lincoln that I think you would cringe if you read it. But the idea was, it was going to be short-term housing for young women who had come to go to business college and were new and had no place else to stay. So, I guess our discussion years ago about this was, is this, does this meet the service plus model? Okay? And I think it, I think it does. We're not quibbling about the use. I think the issue is, should the exemption apply and enable what is essentially an entity that is 99%, 99.99% in the hands of a private equity group, should we enable them to piggyback on the nonprofit exemption? I mean, if this were owned solely by Heartland Family Services, we wouldn't be standing here having this discussion.
The other side of that coin, though, is if Heartland Family Service went and got a loan from a bank instead of doing this via tax credits, that bank might be privately-owned and for-profit, and we also wouldn't be standing here having this discussion, even though that bank would have a lien on that property. This is preferable to Heartland Family Service because they don't have to pay it back. That's why they did it this way. But it's no different than getting, going and getting a loan from a private bank that has a lien on 100% of the property, and we wouldn't be standing here in that case.
That's time. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, Commissioner Kavanaugh made a really, really good point. And I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody in Douglas County, and certainly not the city of Omaha, is so cold-hearted not to think that we want to give the opportunity here. I, I don't even know, I don't, I don't even know what to do with this right now. But what I can tell you, though, and this isn't necessarily a debate, I'm just playing devil's advocate, it's worth a lot to Douglas County. Commissioner Kavanaugh asked the question. It is worth a lot. I, I don't think there's any doubt. I, I can, I would imagine that we could come up with a, a really decent value add. But, to my original point, if we're assuming, if we're going to assume for just a second, that the ownership question test is valid, one could make an argument that we're violating state law. Okay. Again, I'm not a cold-hearted individual, and I know that it's, it's quite valuable to Douglas County, but if we're violating state law, it doesn't really matter. And, and I am not a lawmaker. I, I would love to, to be in that situation where I could tweak something like this and make this particular problem go away. I'm not trying to be overly dramatic here. What I'm saying is that you guys both know this. All it takes is one, one entity to come in and lawyer up after something like this happens in a public forum, and then all bets are off. We, we've got a line of, we've made this argument in Board of Equalization over and over again, at least I have. If you don't follow the appropriate, and, and by the way, precedent's being changed. Here's my final point. Precedent is being changed. But I, I've been here and in executive sessions where precedent has been changed in the past, and we followed it because we were violating state law. We changed precedent because we, either the board or a, or an elected official in, in Douglas County was violating state law. They determined that they could be, there could be an argument made that they were violating state law. Next thing you know, boom, we changed our course. Now, again, I don't know what to do with this. Maybe it's a layover thing, maybe it's a situation where we analyze this a little bit further. I'm not really sure, but that's as far as my thinking takes me, guys. I mean, I don't know what to do with it.
Sorry.
So, I got about a minute left.
Yeah.
I, I would just submit to you quickly that what we do in the law all the time is we distinguish factual situations from other factual situations. Here, you've heard about the services. I don't think there's, I hope there's no question about that. If there is, I'm, I'm happy to explain that further. We know that part of it. If you look at the owner of this facility as NFW, Nebraska Family Works, they do not use this facility for gain or profit. You're not violating state law if you grant the exception, the exemption on that theory. If you look at the ownership, as Commissioner Kavanaugh pointed out, there's nothing in the statute that says you have to own 10%, 50%, 80%. This property is owned for and used for the exclusive use of this charitable purpose of serving these women. Nebraska law says exclusive use doesn't actually mean 100% use. It doesn't say it can't meet whatever percentage. So if you stop at NFW, you meet the test, this should be exempt. If you look at exclusive use, this meets the test, it should be exempt. It's not your run-of-the-mill case, but it still meets all five prongs of the test if you look at it the way I just suggested you look at it. And I respectfully ask that you do that.
That's time. All right, we'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
So, Mr. Levy, at the beginning of this, you mentioned something about how state law would be applied to the, to the situation. Can you go over what you said at the beginning? Because it sounds like to me that we have two different state laws or state requirements that could be fighting each other.
Sure. Trying to remember what I said at the beginning.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think what I was talking about was 77-202, and as we've talked about, that has the, the five-part test. And so it's not so much, in my view, that two state laws are arguing with each other. It's the, what we're talking about is how do you apply those, the five parts of that test to this particular property?
And you had mentioned how the nonprofit, the NFW is the owner, the, is that the .01%?
No, and so NFW is the full owner of this property. They are the owner of the property. They are the applicant for the exemption.
No, the applicant, the applicant is the.
It's Heartland Family Service.
The applicant is, well, the LLC. And the LLC has a 99.99% interest in the investors. So I'm not entitled.
No, no, other, other way around. The investor has a 99% interest in the LLC.
Yeah, exactly. And they're the owner.
But the LLC is the owner of the property and the operator of the property. And the LLC, Nebraska Family Works LLC, does not operate or own this property for gain or profit.
Right. Yeah, so that's, I think that's the clear step.
That's the dispositive fact, in my view.
That's the step. So who's the owner? The owner, it sounds like it's NFW to me.
That's my argument, yes.
And then another thing, too, when, I think, tax credits, I know are, are profit per se, but there's no other revenue, nothing else that's going to this, this group. It's just.
They only get tax attributes from, from the property. That's right.
Uh huh. It seems like it doesn't follow the traditional route of a for-profit organization trying to piggyback on profits of a, or on the, the revenue of a, a nonprofit.
Right. It's not, right. There, yeah. You can think of other analogies where a for-profit private company comes in and owns some kind of a facility, that the facility is providing a charitable-type service, but that entity is the owner and operator of the facility. That's not the case here. Nebraska Family Works is the owner and operator of this facility.
With that, I would like a motion to allow the, this entity to remain a nonprofit, or to, to be exempt.
All right. So, got it. Just trying to think. The, the main motion was to approve the resolution as it stands. So you would like to, basically, if you pull, if you pull out NFW, that by default does not deny it, right? And then would the need, would we need to come back with an approval, separate resolution, or the resolution gets approved administratively if we take it out?
Looks like we're pulling out NFW, but we're also delaying the Danish group, too.
Okay. So, yeah, we can pull out Danish and NFW and then vote on separately.
Yes. That'd be my motion, yes.
Sounds good. Second by.
May, may I ask a question?
Yep.
The motion is only for the NFWLLC property to grant?
And to lay over the Danish.
Yeah, okay. Because I know there's somebody here from Centering Corporation that wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
And so I don't want them to get lost in the shuffle.
All right. We're going to pull that one as well, to take it separately. Okay. Mr. Clerk, you got that? And the second was by Borgson? Okay, thank you.
Well, the, the, the main, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan are agreeing to the, because they're the ones that made the main motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, all right. So it's approving items C and H. We're going to remove NFWLLC. And then, I'm sorry, the other one was Centering Corporation?
Centering Corporation would like to speak, too. And I don't know if there's anybody else, but, but yeah, so I think, you know, before you deal, because there's a number of properties in this thing. Sir, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
We're going to, since it's a part of the motion to just pull them out, we'll, we'll let him speak shortly.
Okay.
Pull out Centering, pull out NFW, and table Danish for two weeks from now. So the main motion, as amended, keeps Missouri, Ralston, and Ralston Recreation.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman, is the plan still to vote on the substance of the NFW exemption today?
Yeah, we'll look back around in a second.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, do you want to speak on NFW? Since we're gonna talk about NFW in a second.
The way you introduced it, this is C and H.
C and H.
Yeah. That's my topic.
All right, go for it.
It's not just those four or five organizations that you just talked about, but I've sat in these chambers for quite a few years.
Larry, can you identify your, just identify yourself real quick.
Larry Store, 501.5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 6813. I've sat and listened to this type of things and votes for quite a few years. I'm sitting there thinking, how many organizations similar to this that do similar things do we have in Omaha? Are we so in dire need of another woman's, whatever, community centers, community health centers for this and that? There's a lot. Shake your head. This is not funny business. I'm trying to hold my government responsible because I cannot vote for every one of you, okay? Voting you in or out of office is not possible. I'm holding you responsible today because although not a high-faluting businessman or lawyer, if you listen carefully to what was said today, there's lots of loopholes for lawyers and business accountants to hide profits. You're in business to make a profit, no matter who you are. Now, if you can hide expenses by forming a 501(c)(3), so be it. I might start one of my own and, and draw a big salary as a nonprofit, talking on politics, educating the county board, for example. If I have a smart lawyer and a smart accountant, they can hide things with the legalese and the accounting terminology that is used to
Approving the remaining ones.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so let's take up NFW and finish that conversation. Would you like to remake that motion?
Motion to not deny exemption, or not deny?
Rather, just approve the exemption.
Approve the exemption.
Approve the exemption for NFW. Is there a second? Second by Borgerson. Discussion on that. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mike, give a second. I think we have a fair understanding of what this structure looks like. And Commissioner Friend brought this up, that, you know, this could be challenged. Is this appealable to, like, Turk or somebody?
Sure.
Okay. Who would have standing to make that appeal?
We could, and we'd have to think about it. And additionally, the Department of Revenue has the ability to review grants of exemption on the part of county boards and take those to Turk.
Okay. And I gotta hand it to you for playing heads-up ball to even bring this up.
Well, we should have had this discussion way before. It's taken a while to get smart enough to ask for these operating agreements.
That's fine, better late than never. But, you know, these are kinds of things that it's better to know than not know. In this particular situation, I think, if I'm reading this right, the tendency is, like I said, for equitable reasons, to say, well, okay, but this service is one that is good for our community. And so if we have to forego a little property tax to do that...
Commissioner, I'm not making the argument that it isn't good for the community.
No, no, I understand that. I'm saying, you did a good job, this is no reflection on that. If it goes to the exemption, which I'm tending to support, it's for that reason.
Sure. Oh, no, 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 I get that. And candidly, I know that the Department of Revenue looks at the grants of exemptions. We have so many in Douglas County because of our size. I think when they look at our stuff, it's like drinking through a fire hose. And I'm not even going to try and project whether this will be on the radar screen.
This doesn't mean that this goes for all time in all cases. I mean, if there's another case like this, bring it to us, and, you know, it's a case-by-case determination.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, if you've got just one second.
Of course.
The, the structure of this deal is of interest to me. So this building, do you know how old it is?
No, man. Nebraska Family Works rehabilitated what had been a vacant building that was not a good thing in the community for a long time. I, I'm guessing, but I'm gonna say this building was originally built in the 60s.
If I may, County Clerk Dana, she's 1963, according to the assessor's website.
So, they purchased, they purchased this property ten years ago, I guess?
Yeah, probably 2012, 2013, they started down this road.
Okay. And they either paid cash or they got a mortgage on the property. Do you know which?
I don't recall.
Okay. In financing the property, this would be not that dissimilar, I guess, from some tax increment financing mechanisms. They could have used this credit of $160,000 a year to service that mortgage, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know if that was the case?
I don't know what exactly the income stream is, other than, I know from, at that time, we worked on all of this financing. I mean, this was not a project long on financing, so I'll put it that way.
No, I understand. Do you know if they currently have a mortgage on this property?
I don't know.
Okay. But they'd either have a mortgage that they'd have to service and presumably using some of the tax credit, or, which is, they can monetize that tax credit for purposes of doing that.
They can't as a nonprofit. Only the for-profit entity under federal law can monetize that tax credit. They don't have the federal income tax liability, it doesn't do them any good. That's, that's why, I'm glad you brought this up, I should have brought this up sooner. That's why you go get that private for-profit investor, because they can use the tax credit. It's truly a public-private partnership, making use of the federal tax code to support activities like what's going on here.
That's time. Thank you.
And one more item. Commissioner, if you wish, I think with the application, we sent on up the operating agreement for the NF, for the LLC, if you were interested in digging into the fine details.
We'll jump to Commissioner Rogers.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be quick. I mean, I mean, David, you made a point saying, I'm noting, just my notes saying, you were saying that certain things met the test. I think that's your interpretation of it, because Mr. Goodwill has his interpretation, I think I have mine. I'm gonna support it, but I just, just want to know for the record, I mean, like comments that Commissioner Friend made, there's a part of me that's kind of scared of the precedents. I mean, I don't see anything getting there, but we've said it and I approve it, but I just want to say for the record, I mean, it's, it's, you know, if this gets to a point where it gets out of hand, I'm assuming the state will make changes.
Commissioner, if I don't, if I may, the other sort of LIHTC agreement-type properties are generally not, they don't have a nonprofit in the mix. They, they just sort of are what they are. And in fact, they went to the legislature some years ago to get a rather sweetheart method of valuing the properties that excludes any consideration of the tax credits whatsoever. I do appreciate your concern. I once had a colleague at the state who would say, if you exempt it, they will come. So, I don't know, now that we've opened this door, if there's going to be a parade of these kinds of arrangements with nonprofits. I, I rather think not, but nonetheless, I certainly appreciate your concerns.
No, I agree. I think, you know, I'll just lean on street poets and say, you know, don't hate the player, hate the game. It's what it is, we'll go from there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? If not, the motion is to approve exemption for NFW LLC. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was one item originally in C, Centering Corporation, that we also pulled out for discussion purposes, if you'd like to come up.
Mr. Chair, it's also an item H as well.
Got it, thank you.
That's what I was gonna say. So I'm from Centering Corporation, I'm the business manager. We've been in business since 1977.
Sir, can you identify, say your name?
Oh, sorry, Mark Roberts. We've been exempt, I guess, at 1977. I understand, Mr. Goodwill, he had said that the denial was due to that we're a bookstore, which we are, and previous, they had us listed as a counselor. We are exclusive to grief and loss. All our resources are based on that. I do have the criteria that was spoke about earlier, and I do believe we meet all the criteria. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we do not have ownership. We are exclusive, there's no profit connected to us, we're just one entity, no parent company, no sister company, any of that kind of stuff. What else was, no financial gain or profit was point three. Yes, we are, as I said, we are a nonprofit. We do not discriminate, and we do not sell alcohol. I don't really think I need the whole four minutes. That's, that's the basis of my understanding of why we should continue to be exempt.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioners, Mike Goodwill, Douglas County, Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. The basis for our recommendation is the use test, that essentially, I think we operated for a long time under the assumption that Centering Corporation did grief counseling, sold materials, donated materials. And again, '24 is a deep-dive year, so we asked them follow-up questions. I think the application said, well, we're a resource center. So we followed up and said, well, what is that? And Mr. Roberts was truthful enough to say, well, basically, we're a bookstore. And I don't know that there's anything inherently charitable about being a bookstore, even when you sell specialized materials. And to that end, there's a state Supreme Court case from the 70s dealing with a religious bookstore, where the Supreme Court said, well, yeah, I get it that you sell religious stuff, but nonetheless, it's, it's a bookstore. There isn't anything charitable about it, or religious about it. So, that was the basis for our denial. This was another kind of, okay, let's look a little closer at this, because it's a full application year. So, that was the basis for our recommendation.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Property been exempt?
Probably about the same length of time as NFW, if not even a little bit longer. And I think we've been operating that, the applications are, even in full application years, are a little bit of a blunt instrument. And I think we made an assumption that there were things going on onsite that probably weren't, that there was grief counseling going on, so there'd be a therapeutic element to it in addition to the bookstore.
So is this some kind of a specialized bookstore?
Well, they sell, they sell grief materials, and so I...
Grief material?
Yeah, the, most of the, if you go to the website...
It is specialized, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sir?
Yes, it is specialized. It's only on grief and loss, all the books.
Specifically, that's all?
Specifically.
Oh. And do you know how long you've been tax-exempt?
1977 is when it was formed.
Okay. Are you the owner?
There is no ownership, because we're a nonprofit. I am a business manager, I'm also the secretary and the treasurer.
So Centering Corporation is the owner?
Yes.
And they're a not-for-profit?
Yes.
I guess I'm missing the point here. For many years, they've been eligible as a not-for-profit selling specific grief material.
Well, I would, I would, I would point out that merely being a nonprofit is not entirely dispositive.
Sure.
In fact, the state Supreme Court has said on several occasions that merely being a 501(c)(3) organization doesn't qualify you for property tax exemption. So, when Mr. Roberts was kind enough to tell us that, well, it's just pretty much a bookstore, then you're asking the question, is the operation of a bookstore, albeit with specialized materials, a charitable activity? And in light of some of the Supreme Court decisions out there, specifically the one involving the religious bookstore, I think you'd be hard-pressed to say that a retail bookstore, even selling specialized materials qualifies for exemption under the use test.
That's a good question, because I know some, call them religious bookstores in town, I don't know what their tax category would be.
We don't even get to that question if they are owned by for-profit entities. And off the top of my head, I can't think of anybody as applied as a religious bookstore for an exemption. So, they may well be all, they may well all be owned by for-profit entities.
And then we get to the question of, how much are we talking about here? I mean, what's the, what's the assessed value of the property?
Well, the value of the real property, per the exemption application for the real property, was 377.6. And then I think there were several thousand dollars' worth of personal property, depreciable personal property, computers, furniture, and the like. So, not a huge amount of money, but I would caution you on this, okay? And I'm not, I'm not, I mean, yes, I get, as a frame of reference, wanting to know how much money is at stake. On the other hand, the five-part exemption test doesn't have a dollar limit. And I'm always a little bit nervous when boards start to talk about, well, should we grant this or not grant this, because of how much money is on the table? Because that clearly is not part of the five-part test. And if you want to make it, you know, this is, this is probably better left for your county attorney's office, but if you want the decision to stand up on appeal, in the event that, say, the Supreme, the Department of Revenue decides they want to take it to Turk, the discussion of the dollar amount...
That's time.
Sure.
Well, you see where I'm going.
I do.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this might be oversimplifying things a little bit, but Mike, what would happen, what would happen if this organization hired a therapist, sat that therapist down at the front desk, and when somebody was looking for a book, that therapist said, you want some help? Does that meet one of the criteria?
I, I think in terms of therapy, there'd probably need to be a more ongoing component than just what you have described. I mean, if they were regularly, if they were regularly dealing with patients as, as part of their mission, you know, then I think maybe it does put you on a little bit of a different footing, in the sense that there's therapeutic care. And if you take the view that, that mental care is, is every bit as much healthcare as physical care is, then you're having a whole different discussion.
Okay, so, so...
But I think you'd have to do a little bit more than just say, well, okay, you lost a child, the, the section for parents who have lost children is over here, and we think this is...
Right, understood. So, there's quite a dichotomy between what we just heard over the last 20 minutes and what this is, and certainly no offense meant, and with all due respect, we're talking about a different situation. Every one of these things have different situations attached to them. My final thing is, some of those criteria, how, how do we rectify this? Some of those criteria that they'd have to meet, how do they get there? Because right now, all it is is a bookstore. Can we help them? They've been receiving an exemption for almost 50 years, and now we're about to yank it away. So, how, how do we dialogue and work with this organization to say, look, we understand the precedents, now you gotta up the ante a little bit? I mean, things have to change. Can we, can we delay this a week and work through these issues? I know you're busy.
Well, I know, but I, I think there'd be a deeper use change that would have to occur in terms of what's happening onsite.
Can you...
And I don't imagine...
I'd like to say, you know, we have met the criteria, so I'm confused as to why we haven't. The ownership, the five points, as he pointed out, we've met all five.
Okay, I, I don't know, again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Just quick, two cents on my end. I mean, at least in this one, the property's actually owned by the nonprofit directly, 100%, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And we're actually dealing with an incorporated 501(c)(3) nonprofit, not like a subsidiary LLC quasi-for-profit entity. So, it's, it's an actual nonprofit, it's owned by the nonprofit, it has a nonprofit mission of grief and associated kind of spectrum of grief and mourning. And I think the fact that it's executing its mission through a, I don't know if we can call it like a novel service delivery, but, you know, a service delivery that might be a little bit different, doesn't make it a entity or mission that's not serving its actual mission of helping people with mourning and grief. And so, you know, there's, and they want to be the only example of a for-profit kind of model bookstore being used for, in a nonprofit setting for nonprofit purposes. For example, there's for-profit sport leagues that make a lot of money, and then there's nonprofit sport-based entities like Pace and others who help kids through sports. Both are sports leagues, but one has a nonprofit mission, where the revenue goes towards the mission, the other one obviously is for-profit. So in this case, it's nonprofit who owns the property, and just because they're doing their mission through a service that we deem as typically for-profit model, doesn't mean that it's going for-profit. I assume all revenue goes back to the nonprofit mission, is that correct?
Correct.
And I assume it's not a huge budget. What's your annual budget?
We probably make a few hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, it's pretty small. So, I'm a nonprofit guy, so I understand the difficulties of it. So, I actually would lean towards approving it, since it is an actual nonprofit who owns the actual property directly 100%, and it's all going back to the mission of the nonprofit. So, yeah, I would move to approve. Second by Kavanaugh. Extra discussion on this? If not, we'll vote.
One moment, please, Commissioners.
One moment, please, Commissioners.
Uh huh, go ahead.
If you'd have been first, I'd have denied you, but I almost feel like there's a, there's almost a sense of, the state can make this change, but I just want to say for the record, I, I got an eerie feeling about this, and I don't support it. If you'd have been first, it'd have been a clear no. This first case now is murky, derailed up, and I almost feel like there's a sense of fairness. And there's some precedent of 50 years that I don't feel comfortable in taking away. So until somebody can give me some clarity, then I, I'm just saying I'm supporting it for that purpose, but I just wanted to have that on the record. I'm not wholeheartedly there, but this is not the hill I'm gonna die on. Thank you.
And Commissioner? All right, we'll vote. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, you got my name right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rogers brings up an interesting point, too. I, I don't know that I would have denied this if you were first. What I can tell you is, I've known Mr. Goodwilly for three years, and I also know the process and procedure, since the new assessor has been elected, has changed a bit. And, and there, and, and Mr. Goodwilly alluded to this, a little more of a deep dive into how business has been, has been done, and what that process and procedure looks like. I'm gonna vote yes as well, but I'm telling, I, I, I have similar concerns about opening up a Pandora's Box. Now, that being said, it's awful hard, it's, it's awful difficult to take 50 years of precedence and just toss it out the window. So I hope Mr. Goodwilly doesn't, well, I can let him speak for himself. I don't, I hope it's not a reflection on the type of deep dive and the change in process and procedure that you're involved in. So appreciate the work you're doing, appreciate the work you're doing, hope we don't have to deal with this again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see, Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, yeah, thanks. So I was just Googling your, your bookstore, and I, I see that you're affiliated with a, a national organization, is that right? Is it Centering, Centering and Grief Digest?
That's just the name of the company.
Name of the company?
It's not national, we're one location-
Okay.
-in Omaha.
So you're like a franchise?
No, no franchise.
No, it's just a company that you affiliate, that you get their materials from?
We, we publish some materials and others we buy from vendors.
Okay, so do you have an affiliation with this national company, or?
I'm not, if you're, Centering and Grief Digest is our company, I'm not sure what-
Oh, that's your company, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what national. I think you're probably reading where it said, we've supported nationally disasters.
It's the history of it, in the last 10 years, it's a national. So what you're doing is actually reaching out nationally with what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so you're a, a small little bookstore in Omaha, Nebraska, on Maple Street, and you're reaching out nationally to help with grief?
Right, we, we support hospitals, funeral homes, they buy our resources.
So, so for a, a small, a small group, you actually do a lot of good, it sounds like?
Yeah, we think so.
Okay, all right, and so the, I, I guess I had in my mind a, a picture of us, just a little neighborhood bookstore with, you know, you could easily have grief counselors, but it sounds like you're bigger, you're providing actually a bigger service.
Yes.
So, okay, okay, that helps clarify things, all right, thank you.
We'll vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Morgan abstaining, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you, we have one more item under equalization, which is the presentation listed as reports of destroyed real property and information for the public.
No, yours, you want that up right now?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right. Morning Commissioners, Douglas County Clerk Dan Esch, Chief Field Deputy from the Assessor Register of Deeds Office is with me, Ron Murtaugh, and then Catherine Hall, Assistant County Administrator. So shortly after, well, or literally the night of April 26th, we all started talking. We figured we just need to start spreading the word that folks who were impacted by the tornadoes knew about the report of destroyed real property. Mike Goodwilly kind of referenced it earlier, starting in 2019, this became a law. You know, before, before then, like Mike was saying, your value as of January 1 of that year, that stayed your value the remaining of the, the remainder of the year unless you protested, but even in a situation like this, for something that happened after January 1, technically you probably shouldn't have your, you know, when, when you protest the Board of Equalization, really the referees and the board are supposed to be taking up, was your value as of January 1 of that year fair or not? And then really, if something like this happened, you kind of have to wait till the next year before you saw some relief. Well, the report of destroyed real property basically says, in the first half of the year, if something's happened to your property due to, due to a calamity, you can file this report to receive some, a reduced property valuation for that year. So far to date, we've received 52, and by the way, it's not just for the tornado, it's any calamity. One of the 52 is actually just a random house fire that happened, so it's not, you know, it, obviously, we're kind of, we're doing what we can, and I'll get into this a little later, to reach out to folks that we know went through some property damage through the tornado, but this is for, I mean, if someone got their house flooded this morning and it caused a significant amount, amount of damage, they could look into doing something like this. So I'll just kind of go through this handout I had, and really, so it's the, who can file? It's gotta be, it's gotta be the property owner, that's the thing we'll get into a little bit. You know, we can't, the Board of Equalization or the Assessor's Office at this point can go in on, on our own and make the changes. We, they, these, these folks who suffered damage, they need to file the report, so that's why we're, you know, doing what we can to make sure we're reaching everybody. But it's, it's a between, on or after January 1 of 2024, or before July 1, 2024, if you're an owner of a property that's suffered significant property damage as a result of a calamity, you can seek a reduced property valuation by filing a report of destroyed real property. And so we have the, on the screen here, we have the, what is a significant damage and what is a calamity, but basically, if, if you think your property, either your land or your building value has been damaged by more than 20% of what the valuation is of that, then, then you should file a report of this, you should file a report. And a calamity is a disastrous event, including but not limited to a tornado, a fire, an earthquake, flood, or other natural event which significantly affects the assessed value of the real property. So these reports have to be filed by July 15th, 2024. I mean, people already file them now, like I told you, we've got 52, but they do have some time, I mean, basically have a little less than two months left to get them in. And they have to be filed with both the County Assessor's Register of Deeds Office and the County Clerk's Office, that's just the way the, the law is written. But, you know, we've got a system set up between our two offices where, well, first of all, if you, someone were to submit something via email, the email address on there, form425@douglascounty-ne.gov, that would go to both offices. And then if someone were to mail one in, Kim Bolo in my office is talking to, in the Clerk's Office, is talking to Chris Sides in the Assessor Register of Deeds Office, just to make, you know, it's like if we get something in the mail, they're basically every day talking to each other, hey, did you, you know, I got one for, you know, this property, did you get it as well? And if Chris didn't, or vice versa, then we're just, you know, make, forwarding on to them, make sure that they're getting it as well, so. But we would encourage people, even though we're, we're doing that, I'd still encourage people to, if you're gonna mail stuff in or drop stuff off, that you send it to both offices. And then if you, if you own more than one property, it's like the property valuation protest, in, in this sense where you got, you got to file a report for each parcel, you can't file one report to cover multiple parcels of property, you got, got to do one for, for each parcel. Although the report's the only required thing, we do encourage people to submit supporting documentation, photographs, and obviously Ron can speak, if I'm out of turn on this one, but I think for some, for some of these properties, the photographs are good enough. I mean, it's basically proven the property, it's awful what some of these people are going through, I mean, the pictures are unbelievable, honestly, some of the stuff we've gotten. So, but if you're kind of more in gray area, for lack of a better phrase, where, you know, wasn't totally destroyed, but you think it's definitely more than 25, 20%, then you probably want to include some damage or repair estimates, insurance documents, or any other information that, you know, you think proves that the value of the property has been affected. And I, I'm just gonna repeat this part, you know, I've already gone over it, but must a report of destroyed real property be filed? And the answer is yes. We, like, like I said, we can't, the county cannot make a change on our own, we have to have these owners file the reports, and then we can put the rec, put a recommendation before you all to approve. And again, July 15th is the deadline. So what happens after a report of destroyed real property is filed? So the Assessor's Office, and gotta give them some kudos, because even though the report is supposed to be filed with, filed with them, you know, the statute doesn't really say that they need to do anything else, it's, the Board of Equalization is the one that needs to take action, but the Assessor's Office, much like with the 2019 floods, and in 2020, when there was a lot of commercial properties arguing COVID as a calamity, they reviewed, they're gonna review these reports that are filed, then make a recommendation, and we'll, we'll basically submit those recommendations to the, to the Board of Equalization for approval. The, the Board of Equalization has to review and make a decision on these reports by August 10th, so it's the same deadline as the property valuation protests, but I'll get into it a little bit later, we'll, we'll, we're not gonna, probably not gonna put them before you all together, we'll probably do different batches, if you will, so I'll get into that a little bit later, but, but by August 10th is when we have to make a decision on them. And then decision notifications will be sent to the owners within a week after the BOE has made a decision on the report of destroyed real property. And we, we plan on notifying these folks ahead of time, too, to let them know, this is gonna be on, your report of destroyed real property is gonna be on the BOE's agenda on this date, and here is what the recommendation is, so they'd be able to, you know, attend or submit comments ahead of time if they had any issues with the recommendation. And what's, what's say, if someone gets their, their decision back on the report of destroyed real property, and they're, they, they disagree with it, well, then they'd have the opportunity to protest that decision. So the protest would be back to the BOE, but what would happen is, the next time around, the Assessor's Office really wouldn't be involved, that we'd just get one of our referees to review it. I mean, they, the referee would have access to all the Assessor's recommendation, or any, you know, anything that the Assessor's Office put forward, but the, a referee would be the one making the protest, the recommendation back to you all. And I don't have this on the sheet, but even further, let's just say the referee, the County Board of Equalization approves a referee recommendation that this property owner still disagrees with, then they can go to Turk. So hopefully their folks are happy the first time it comes to us, but they do potentially have two, you know, protests or appeals to go through after that. So if you go to boardofequalization.org, we have a webpage specifically there for destroyed real property. If by email, you can reach out to us at form425@douglascounty-ne.gov. Form 425, I didn't go into this, Form 425 is like the, it's the actual number of the form that the state gives us to do, so that's where that comes from, it's the Form 425. We'd rather keep that email, I mean, if someone sent us a question, we're not gonna ignore it, but we prefer to keep that email just for report submissions. If you have questions, you can obviously reach out to the Assessor's Office as well, but county clerk at douglascounty-ne.gov, or by phone, 444-6762. So the last, I got two more pages I want to go through, just steps that the county's already taken, and then steps the county will take. So there's a, and some of this I've gone over, but destroyed real property webpage at boardofequalization.org, and I, after I get through this, I might go show you two websites I want to show you, which would be this webpage and then another, DL through GIS. But this webpage would have the Form 425 form, which is the la, of the handout I provide you all, it's, it's the very last page, the form. So it's just a one-pager, and on the back, on the back, there's, you know, kind of just general information about the form. But we do have links to this webpage on the Clerk's website, and the Assessor's web, dcassessor.org website, and then, of course, we've been, and it hasn't just been the Clerk and the Assessor Register of Deeds, we've seen other county departments, but, you know, we're trying to share this all over our social media platforms to make sure folks are aware. The Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office has created business cards that include a QR code that go to the destroyed real property webpage, I think Ron handed you some earlier. The Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds has created yard signs with the QR code, and they place those yard signs in various locations throughout tornado-impacted areas. And then if, and if you come in through Farnham Street to this building, the desk right before where the sheriff's deputies are, that you'll see a yard sign, like, kind of taped to that as well, so people could just, you know, with their smartphone, go over the QR code, and it would take them to the, to that webpage, which would include the form and all the information that we'd want them to know about the process. Ron, actually, Murtaugh, actually canvassed the impacted areas, I want to say it was the first weekend in May, he actually went out there himself, just went door-to-door, and the people were there, he gave them information about the reports of destroyed real property. And then on May 9th and 10th, there was that mark at the Elkhorn Suburban Fire District, so on that Thursday, the Assessor's Office had staff there, and then on Friday, the Clerk's Office had staff there. You know, I guess I didn't ask Ron or the Assessor's Office how many people they helped, but we probably, between the Clerk's Office, I, probably a dozen people came up to us during that time that, and we gave them information. So that was, and there was all sorts of stuff, there was really, I thought that mark was pretty good, so it wasn't just the report of destroyed real property stuff, it had all sorts of resources there for folks. GIS has helped with the tracking of property damage through their website, you can get there by going to dogus.org/tornado, and I'm gonna pull it up in a little bit. That's gonna be pretty valuable to us going forward as far as reaching out to people. And then we have a shared Google Sheet set up between the Assessor's Office and the Clerk's Office, just to keep track of the reports that we've received, and then a network drive, like if we get anything emailed in, we're just using some naming conventions, kind of like renaming it and putting it on the network drive, so we're all organized, look at the same thing, and then if somebody were to mail in a hard copy, we're scanning it in and put it on this network drive as well, so the clerks and the Assessor's Office, you know, can see what's been filed for each report of destroyed real property, and of course, you all are welcome to ask for any of that information, especially if you know maybe you got a constituent that's filed something and you'd want to take a look at it, just let us know, we definitely provide that to you. So what we're gonna do is, that we're gonna utilize information collected in the damage assessment reports submitted by 211 citizens and EMA volunteers, and try to contact those owners who, one, have, have a real property that is reported to be damaged, but, but have not submitted a Form 425 yet. So Karen, I'll probably go now to do this. Let me just go there.
Let's stop share, and then let's start it again. There's that one.
Thank you. Okay, one moment here, I'm sorry. So this is dogus.org/tornado, I mean, when you go there, the, the link name changes, but you will get to this page- But you will get to this page by going to dogus.org/tornado. And it has all the properties that have been reported as destroyed, which is total loss, structures compromised, not repairable, or major, which is substantial structural damage to the walls and roof, but is repairable. And then down to minor, affected, inaccessible, and other. So we're definitely gonna be trying to reach out to these folks in the, in the destroyed and major categories, cuz I, I mean, I think that more than likely, every single one of them probably qualifies for reduced property valuation. I mean, we, you know, obviously, we need to look into it. But my guess is almost all of them probably do. So the nice thing is, I was talking to Mike Shownlon, we do have, like, some contact information for these homeowners. I mean, I know by the property, we can definitely get the mailing address. But, I mean, who knows? I don't even know how these folks, some of these folks are even getting their mail right now, you know? So, but we can try more than one way, other than by mail, to get ahold of them, by phone number. One way I've thought of, and I, I haven't really discussed this with Ron yet, but I'm sure you're gonna have a problem with it, or the assessor's office. But the first two weeks of Board of Equalization, you know, we have temporary staff that comes on board. I mean, they're there for the whole summer. But usually, the first two or three weeks aren't nearly as busy for them. We're not, they're usually not getting 40 hours just because the volume's not there yet. But this could be something that we have them do in the earlier times of the month, of June, to, like I said, reach out to folks who we believe have suffered either destroyed or major property damage, but we haven't received reported destroyed real property for them yet. And we'll just either, you know, call them or email them or send them letters and just make sure they know that by July 15th, they need to get a report filed with us. The other website, I'll show you real quick while I have it up, is, this is the Board of Equalization homepage. The very top part of it is just a little brief thing about destroyed, reports of destroyed real property. And then if you went to the webpage, goes over a lot of the stuff that we were talking about right now. So... We'll continue, and we've been doing this, but we'll just continue to reach out to neighborhood associations, community organizations, and elected officials representing the impacted areas, just trying to spread the word. And then going back to how we'll present them to you, this is kind of a preliminary. You know, it could change. But I think how we were talking about it, what we do is, at a meeting in June, we'll probably, we'll have, bring some of these recommendations towards you. And they will only be properties that have 100% damage. And then again, and then we'll do it again in July, we'll have another meeting. So I guess the idea is, or probably wouldn't be, I mean, obviously, anybody is welcome to discuss any of the recommendations we make, no matter if it's, seems like a no-brainer or not. But I guess, I think we're trying to, like, get ones to present the, earlier to you, present the ones that we feel like are kind of a, okay, this is clearly, this was 100% damaged, you know? So we'll probably do that once in June, once again in July, and then August 6, 2024. That's, that's the last meeting before August 10th. I mean, obviously, there's always potential for a special meeting, but we don't, you know, that's not a goal, of course. But August 6, 2024 would be the last scheduled meeting before August 10th, that we just have any of the remaining reports of destroyed real property on there. And then, like I said afterwards, after any of these meetings, these folks will be notified ahead of time that there's gonna be a recommendation involving their property going before the Board of Equalization. And then afterwards, we, we have to send them notification of what happens afterwards. So we'll, we'll do that as well. That's all I had. I said, you know, if Ron wanted to add anything else?
Good morning, Commissioners, Ron Murtaugh, Douglas County Assessor Registered Deeds. Just a couple of things. We are actually mailing out postcards today. We went through all the data. We're gonna send out 450 postcards. We figured enough weeks has gone by that they probably have mail forwarding, what have you. But it'll also give us a chance that anything that gets returned is non-deliverable. We'll shrink our scope down. Our focus has been on outreach, making sure we get the information out and frequently. And the preliminary dollar figures that we're giving Zach Bass is the single person within our office that's doing that. And what the Commissioners are gonna find in our recommendations are gonna be not only the improvement, the house, the structures, what have you. But quite honestly, we're seeing a lot of land. There's gonna be adjustments to the land value as well. Zach reached out to some surveyors as far as the land, demoing the land, and whether it's a block wall, poured wall, to mitigate that land back to a billable state. So the recommendations are likely going to have not only the improvements, but also the land value on it as well. It's been a great pleasure working with Dan's office throughout this whole process. And, but that's the only thing I wanted to share, was just the outreach and, and what Commissioners may end up seeing when it comes. And we, we absolutely concur that the low-hanging fruit, what I classify as the low-hanging fruit, bring those to you quickly and efficiently, and continue to use the media as we bring them before to continue to get the word out.
Thank you both, appreciate it. We'll jump to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks for this information. Just a few public information questions. I note that the Form 25 needs to be filed with both the county clerk and the Assessor Registered Deeds. If it's not filed with both of them, then it's ineligible, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we're not gonna treat it that way. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that, so I, I kinda touched on this earlier. So Kim Bolo, in my, in the clerk's office, she's getting these. And the assessor's office, I believe it's Chris Seitz. So basically, each day after they get the mail, they're talking to each other, hey, I got this for properties 1, 2, 3, 4, did you? And usually, Chris is saying yes. But if Chris says no, then Kim is just making sure she also receives a, whatever ones she's missing.
I'm glad to hear that, that makes a lot of sense. So people won't be out of luck just because they happen to miss going to both offices. Along those lines, you went through a number of ways that they can file. They could also fill this out and bring it to your office, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. If you could, send us a copy of all of this information. I, for one, like to post it on my social media site, so people can access it there, too. As far as the proof up goes on this 20% thing, just for discussion purposes, if I had a $100,000 property and it was 20% land and 80% the house, how do I prove I have 20% damage? Do I have to get an estimate from a contractor or something? Or do you know?
And that's the difficult area, is the gray area. I can tell you that the...
Ron, could you pull these closer to you a little bit?
That is the gray area, and that's where the response from the clerk's office has been phenomenal. Everything that we've talked to the homeowners about, we assure the homeowners that all we're doing is creating a folder. You can give us photos today, a week from now, as progress goes. If your insurance company gives you something a week from now, we will dump that into the folder. So we emphasize that it's not a one and done. It's that we do need the 425 to start the process, but they'll have their own individual folder to give us all that supporting information. And we did have a gray area, our first gray area won the other day. I believe the house was eight or $900,000 house. So those are the ones that we're holding back to the August, cuz those will probably be the ones that'll have the most conversation.
But 20% is based on my assessed value?
Correct.
Not market value or anything else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot.
We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
I just wanna echo the thank you for the information. I hope that that law change in '17 is a really good thing under the circumstances. That's really big time for the people. I wasn't aware it changed in '17. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I think it's good to have Leah and our chairman involved if we can get the media to put out some information, too. I mean, you just can't get enough information out there. So I think Leah oughta be included and see what she can do with some of the media in getting it out, too. And maybe that's been done, but I'm just echoing that. So thanks again for what you're doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanna thank you for the outreach that has occurred. And while there's been false information of me controlling our social media, I don't. But I do share what is put on our social media to my social media and to get the word out and to help, because this is so important for people who have been affected to know that there is some kind of a relief out there for them. And so, again, I mean, going out there and canvassing, constantly putting the stuff on your websites and the Nextdoor Neighbor app, I've seen it on there. You guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate that. And I'll continue to share when I see the stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this presentation?
Just one thing. We joined Nextdoor Neighbor app probably about six months ago. And anytime we send something out, whether it's homestead exemption or whatever, it hits 225,000 households.
Awesome.
The only thing I would add, and I realize this board understands this, but maybe not everybody watching, is the relief, you know, if, let's just say someone files a Form 425 and it gets reduced to a value they're happy with, you know, you wouldn't notice a reduction in your property taxes until next calendar year. So, you know, during calendar year 2024, you're paying your 2023 property taxes. So these folks wouldn't receive a reduction in that. It'd be next year during calendar year 2025, when they're paying their 2024 property taxes. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity today, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn Board of Equalization. Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now commence our Board of Commissioners meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B. A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2024. And B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, May 28, 2024. Do I have a motion in second? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Whoops. I, I'm sorry, Commissioners, Kavanaugh, Garcia, I think I ended the vote too soon. I'm assuming you're both voting yes.
Yeah.
All right. I apologize. Let the record reflect, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into our consent agenda, items A through K. Do I have a motion in second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Is B crossed out? I noticed that.
Uh, yes, with B being crossed out, correct. All right, we have a motion in second, and we'll jump to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Item K, resolution approving American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA Premium Pay Supplement effective May 26, 2024, through June 22, 2024, whereupon an earlier-to-be-determined sunset date for all eligible Douglas County Health Center employees and authorizing the execution of contract amendments between Douglas County and collective bargaining groups as specified. And looking at the backup documents that we got on this, I didn't see a dollar amount in there. Is there some way that we could estimate what this dollar amount would be?
Patrick, anybody else? Lori?
Commissioners, I can, I can make...
Okay, Marcos?
Marcos C. Martin, Douglas County Administration. So Commissioner, just to clarify, so this is a, is a premium pay that's being paid for two pay periods for those individuals at the Douglas County Health Center. And the rate, if that's what you're asking about, I believe what, what has been budgeted is $270,000 for this. Erin Nelson is actually here, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's, that's the amount that is been budgeted for this. Does that answer the question you were asking?
Yes, you know, we have these ARPA funds in different categories. This is just the general ARPA allocation that we'll be drawing down on for the premium pay. Is that right?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, Commissioner, this is, this is actually revenue that comes from the state as a pass through from state to the Douglas County Health Center for retention for long-term care facility employees. And, yeah, I mean, that, that's the purpose of it. It actually comes to the health center itself.
Okay, so are these ARPA funds from the state coming to the health center?
Yes, these are ARPA funds coming, these are state ARPA fund dollars that are flowing to the health center. And then the health center is allocating those funds.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump to items three, recognitionist proclamations. Today, we have one, and I will toss it to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is from the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Be it resolved, whereas on October 1, 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a congressional bill proclaiming May 15 as National Memorial Day for all law enforcement officers who were slain in the line of duty. And whereas police officers, deputy sheriffs, state troopers, corrections officers, and federal officers come together to form a large honor guard that recognizes the ultimate sacrifices paid by fallen comrades. And whereas the protection of life and property within Douglas County is entrusted to the constant efforts of the men and women who serve in law enforcement. And whereas the week of May 12 through May 18 has been declared as Peace Officers Memorial Week and the day, the day of May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Peace Officers Memorial Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community safe and respectfully invites the attention of all residents to the observance, keeping in mind the sacrifices made in the line of duty by all members of law enforcement while protecting life and property in Douglas County, dated this 21st day of May, 2024. This is signed by Roger Garcia, Chair of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, I, obviously, it's May 21st. This was last week. And if there's any reason that this is late, it's because it's my mistake and a lack of communication. I can tell you, I know, contrary to, I, you all thought I was perfect. It's not the case. I just wanna say thank you. I have a family of law enforcement officers dating back decades, and it means a lot to me. So, sorry it was late. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. And we'll work with staff to make sure we get the timing right moving forward. So with that, I'll take a motion in second. Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to items five, public hearings. We have two. The first one is actually a public hearing that was remaining, remained open from a previous board meeting. It was a public hearing for the Reyes Ranch Entertainment LLC. This application has actually been withdrawn. So at this point, I just need to close the public hearing, and no further action needs to be taken. No, I think I can just close it. Isn't that right, Teresa? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I'll go ahead and close it at this point. Is there any comment on that situation? Otherwise, we'll move forward. All right, so we'll move forward to public hearing B, increased budget... to public hearing B, increased budgets for the Sheriff Corrections and Douglas County Health Center, and provide additional dollars with partial revenue offset for the Douglas County Election Commissioner. I think Lori will kick us off. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for item B related to the budgets.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Lori Persch, Director of Budget and Finance for Douglas County. I am here today to go over the budget supplement for May. As you know, our budget process, we set the budget, and the board approves it. It's effective July 1 of every fiscal year, and then we have two budget supplements that we do to kind of get us through the remainder of the year. The larger one that we do in March, and then a smaller one that we do again in May or June. So I'm here today to go through the request for the smaller one that we are seeking. In total, $1,762,001 for that. How do I click through? There we go. Okay. So I'll break it into two pieces, the unfunded portion and the funded portion. There are four departments that came forward requesting dollars that will be, that are unfunded. The first of which is Corrections. They are seeking $700,000. That increase is to complete the public safety project in the old portion of the building. They have a bid for $700,000. This is for the, the new anti-ligature beds. There are 10 units left to be done in the old portion of the jail, and I think we all understand the urgency due to unfortunate events that have happened in the past. So that is why we, they are looking to do this as a budget supplement instead of putting it in the budget for the next fiscal year. The second piece is the Douglas County Health Center. They are seeking $889,293. This increase is to help cover the increased cost of food service operations. I think this was discussed a little bit yesterday in the Board of Trustees meeting. The third portion is for the Douglas County Sheriff. They are seeking $62,708. That is, that increase is to cover costs related to the tornado on April 26, obviously unforeseeable costs when making the original budget. I have a breakdown from the sheriff of that $62,708. So $41,710 of that was overtime for personnel for the Elkhorn Bennington tornado response. $20,398 was for an emergency purchase of Motorola radios with extended batteries, and $600 was miscellaneous parts for demolition and breaching tools. You'll note that that one has an asterisk next to it because the sheriff's office anticipates submitting eligible expenses to FEMA for reimbursement to the general fund. It is likely, or my understanding from talking with Chief, Chief Rann, is that he believes the, for sure, that the overtime for the personnel, that that portion at least, will likely be covered, which is the $41,710. The fourth department requesting a budget adjustment is the Election Commissioner. He's actually requesting $110,000, but only $45,544 of that is unfunded. And that increase is required to implement the new voter ID law for the May 14, 2024 election. And that, I think, part of that expense was due to adding an additional poll worker to each polling place in order to make sure that we complied with that law. So in total, the unfunded portion is $1,697,545. And again, a portion of that may be refunded by FEMA, but we still have to apply for that. The next section is the funded budget adjustments that are being requested, and that is just from the Election Commissioner. He has funded budget adjustment of $64,456. That is for two special elections, the Elkhorn Public Schools election on November 14 of 2023, and Bennington Public Schools, March 12 of 2024. Note that by statute, political subdivisions are fully responsible for all costs incurred to hold a special election. So that should result in full reimbursement to Douglas County. I believe that Elkhorn Public Schools has already reimbursed Douglas County, and per Brian Cruz, the Bennington Public Schools will be billed before the end of the fiscal year, so before 6:30. So we anticipate in getting those funds pretty shortly. Again, in total, we're looking for a May budget supplement of $1,762,001. The large majority of that is unfunded. I have the breakout here of unfunded versus funded, and then I also broke it out by fund, so you know which, which fund it would be affecting. So it's about 50/50 between the general fund and then the Douglas County Health Center. Short and sweet. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Lori. We'll jump to some questions. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Under the Corrections Public Safety Project.
Uh huh.
Is any of that funded by the Public Safety Bond that we approved in 2016?
I don't believe so. I think that's, this is all just straight from general funds.
So when we're talking these unfunded ones, these are general fund expenses.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And the Election Commissioner's $45,544 for implementing the voter ID law. This is a new unfunded state mandate that is addressed at a largely unsubstantiated supposed problem with voter security, which doesn't really exist, according to all the experts that we've heard here, including our excellent Election Commissioner and his staff. But the state passes, they don't pay for it. Is that correct?
Right. This, this is, this is on the county. I don't know if a portion of that, and I think Brian is actually on the phone, but, or on the call here, but a portion of that is probably just implementation costs, but there is probably an ongoing portion if it is, if it does require an additional poll worker at each place going forward.
Good. Thank you for this.
Thank you. We'll jump to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lori, thanks for the information. I think we have a fairly clear, I think generally, we have a fairly clear understanding of why all of these things happened. What I'm not totally sure about is what would happen, for example, if Douglas County Health Center, that's a, that's a pretty hefty amount. What would happen if the Douglas County Health Center wasn't sourcing some of these services to other entities from a, from a, from a budget supplement standpoint? Does the county board have to go, let me give you an example. If Douglas County Youth Center or another entity decided to outsource these food services, what do we do with that budget supplement at that point? Do we come back to, well, I'm asking you. I should know this. We come back and pull that money back?
Well.
Can we, after a budget supplement has been approved?
I'm not actually sure if we could do that or not, but I think, with, with the cost that they're, to provide the services to the youth center and to the CMHC and whatnot, I, I think most of that would be if they go out for an RFP, these other entities, rather than use the, the health center's kitchen. That would affect the FY 24, '25 budget. This is just to get them through the end of the year, so, meaning the rest of May and June. So I doubt that it would probably take effect before then, so I think they would need these dollars.
Yeah, and I, I'm not picking on the health center. I understand exactly, we, we saw yesterday in the Board of Trustees meeting, why, why this is needed. But it is a significant increase for other entities that are utilizing those services.
Yes. If these costs were allocated to other entities, to, you know, DCYC or whoever else, they would probably be in here looking for a budget supplement, for sure, because that was not part of, you know, anticipated original costs when the budget was set July 1 of last year.
Okay. Thanks, Lori.
We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
The special elections, I think we get reimbursed later. I believe I'm correct on that, isn't that true?
Yes, we do. Uh huh. Yes, that's why, those are on the funded page. I, I put those on a separate page because, yes, you're absolutely correct. Those are by state statute.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure.
Fully refundable.
Everyone knows. Perfect. Thank you for what you've done.
Any other questions on this item during the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And what is the will of the board? Motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to our committees under 6A Finance. We have various items. First one is budget report as presented, and the second one is a resolution authorizing award of $243,250 to the HERE mindfulness program for project operating costs of $15,000 to the HERE Misty's Angel Initiative. Lori, is this ARPA funding from a certain pot? Okay. Does anybody want to speak to this item? Otherwise, we'll vote on it. Yes. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Borgerson?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is from the ARPA allocation, from my ARPA allocation. And this was a program that has already, we did a pilot on it, and it was so successful, we wanted to pursue doing it for an additional timeframe, as well as while we were piling it at Alpha School, we piloted it at Misty's Angels. And we also want to do a program there as well. So it's from my ARPA allocation.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Otherwise, we'll vote. Oh, motion in second. Motion by Borgerson, second by Rogers.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, and we will jump to our presentation. Thank you for your patience, Public Defender Riley and Friends. It is your turn.
Tom Riley, Douglas County Public Defender. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm here with Samantha Dues, Carol Jennings, and Martha Wharton. We're the Budget Planning Committee for the Public Defender's Office. And we're here today to explain to you the reasons we have request, made our request that exceeds the target number by roughly $172,000. And if my math is correct, that's about a little over 2% of the target number. I, I, obviously, I listened to Don Klein's presentation last week, and, you know, a lot of what he talked about, I will probably just expand upon a little bit. The biggest, the biggest change that we have is, as Mr. Klein indicated, Omaha Police Department had switched to a program called Evident.com, which is run by Axon. Axon is actually a company that originally did, provided body cam and cruiser cam, and now they've expanded into the digital evidence field. And as a result, the Douglas County Attorney's Office felt compelled to also adopt this program because that was how they were going to be receiving the discovery. As you probably know, historically, you'd get police reports in paper forms, and we would, the prosecutors would copy them and give us copies. And then as technology got going more, body cam footage, cell phone extractions, cruiser cam footage, et cetera, all would, were put on discs that we were able to retrieve from the county attorney's office. Now that, that has stopped. And we were faced with the option, or, well, with the, with the choice of either taking the free version of Axon or getting the premier version, which of course is expensive. I, originally, I thought, well, maybe we can get away with the free version. So I contacted several public defender offices across the country who experimented with the free version, and they told me, do not do this. It's a disaster for a number of reasons. Number one, there's no, there's no storage. So once the timeframe ends, the, the information disappears. We can't do that. Secondly, there is a timeframe of, once you get permission from the prosecutors to view the evidence, there's a, like a 30-day window, and if you don't get everything done, that disappears. And you have to download it onto discs. These other public defender offices told me that they had to hire a dozen more assistant, not lawyers, but people that just download the stuff. I've talked to some private lawyers in Omaha who have the free version and say that it, it, it takes hours and hours and hours to just download the stuff onto disc, and it's overwhelming their computer capacity. So after, after that, it became apparent to me that we were going to have to get the premier version. And, and just at the county attorney's office, they, they kind of got you by the throat, to be honest with you. So the county attorney did a 10-year contract with them. We did a 10-year contract with them. The contract is the, basically a licensing, and it's, the cost is based on the number of employees you have, not the number of users, the number of employees. And it comes out, it start, I think it starts in the $90,000 to $95,000 a year range, and moves over the 10 years to about 115, gradually increasing. Not horrible, but still an increase. So we have to pay for that in an effort to kind of offset the costs. As you can see on our PowerPoint here, we, we're able to get a, a one-time grant for $16,595 to kind of start up. And then we canceled a, a subscription to another program. Basically, the reason is because this Evident.com Axon has a feature that allows you to transcribe witness, when, when police are talking to a witness, and it's audio or video recorded. This program has a feature that allows, it transcribes what's being said. It ain't perfect, but it will do body cams, it'll, it'll do interviews with witnesses, jail calls, you name it. And previously, we had a, a contract with Justice Text, and that was solely to transcribe these, these interviews. interviews and statements, shall we say. And, you know, they were designed to help Public Defender's Offices, and I really felt bad having to contact them and say, I can't justify having Justice Text and Axon Evident.com because they perform the same function, even though they were much more aligned with Public Defenders than Axon is. Now, it remains to be seen if they overpromise and underdeliver, we'll just have to wait and see. We just started this several months ago, but I think we're kind of in a situation where we're kind of held hostage. We either do this, or we're going to have to hire 10, 15 more people just to do the downloading, and we don't want to go there. Additionally, we've negotiated a deal with the Omaha Bar Association to have our lawyers' dues paid, and the payback for that is free CLE. As you know, the Bar Association, the Nebraska Bar Association requires lawyers to have X amount of hours per year, CLE to maintain your license, and of course, most of the CLE courses cost money. And the OBA has assured us that they will present relevant CLEs, they'll work with us to create relevant CLEs that are free, that will qualify for the CLE requirements at no cost other than the membership dues. So, and I think that was about $5,000. Obviously, anytime we're projecting budget costs, it's somewhat of a, I don't want to say it's a guess, but you know, you have to kind of project out what do you anticipate happening. Well, there are increased causes in printing services, which is Bishop's Contract through dot com, which I'm sure you're familiar with. Nothing goes down. Transcripts and deposition services have increased, and taking depositions in these cases, while they have an upfront cost, they can save an awful lot in the long term, because frequently when witnesses are deposed by either us or by the state, sometimes the cases can get resolved because the witness falls apart, or the witness is dynamite, and you can tell your client, hey, watch, read this depot, and let's have second thoughts about whether you want to keep proceeding with this thing. And the same holds true if their state's witness doesn't come through for them. So the depositions are a significant part of our practice, and I do think in the long haul, they serve a cost-saving to the criminal justice system. I'm hesitant to discuss our lectrivers. We have maintenance contracts, and I assume you all know what lectrivers are. And this is how we have, we have to keep our files for X amount of years. And the closed files basically go into a lectriver, and you're invited to come over to our office sometime and take a look at it. It's a huge, huge contraption, for lack of a better term, that we've put our files in. And that we have to keep them because it's, let's say someone gets put on probation for three years, and we close the file, and then they commit something that's alleged to be a violation, then we have to go pull the file. And so we keep these. And the reason I'm somewhat reluctant is because we had, Carol's pulling her hair out, because we had another, we had two lectrivers, and twice they installed the wrong one. So now we're going for number three, and it's with the same company, and once again, there are very few providers. So one of our conference rooms now is full of boxes of closed files, because lectrivers don't work, or one of them doesn't. The other increase is our case management system called American Defender, and the case management system, while it's less than perfect, it serves a great, a significant service to us in that it does an immediate conflicts check. We obviously don't want to be put in a position where we're representing someone, and then we find out three months later that we're also representing the complaining witness. This program allows us to do two checks immediately, and we can withdraw from cases with conflicts immediately, instead of screwing it up and having to withdraw from both cases because we've talked to both people. The increased staff spending is also connected to the Evident.com issue. We, Samantha, to my right, had been the sole and only trial assistant in the office since she started, and the job, the workload on that is just too much for one person. So we internally promoted two people, Sam, trained them, and the reason is because so much of this, these Body cams, and interviews, and downloads from cellphones are amazingly, the amount of information is monumental, and we just needed more people. In the long haul, we're probably going to have to be coming back asking for more as time goes on. But just to give you an example, I've got a, I'm preparing for a murder case that's coming up in the next several months, and, you know, most of the witnesses have social media pages, and the police get search warrants for the social media pages. I spent this weekend going through one person's account that had over 7,000 pages of data. Now, some of it is, you know, text messages, some of it is photographs, some of it are videos, but when you're provided with this information, you damn well better go through it, because there could be things that are extremely important on those, on those social media accounts, that could have a significant bearing on the case. And the time consumption is amazing, and that, I guess, that's just one guy. There are probably, oh, in this case, they had 57 search warrants, so that'd give you a little bit of an idea of what I'm talking about. And that's why we need help. So the increased staff spending is, we promoted two people, and then we had to hire, they were secretaries, so we had to hire two additional secretaries, and that's what that cost is. We want to emphasize that we do take seriously the responsibility of being efficient, and I want to point out some of the cost-saving measures that we undertake. As you can see, we don't cap caseloads. The American Bar Association and a lot of these national organizations send out recommendations on caseload caps, and some of them are so low, I mean, if I complied with them, I'd probably have to hire, I'm not lying to you, probably another 30 lawyers. I think that the caps that they discuss are not realistic, and, now, I grant you what I just told you about, how much time it'd take to do all these things, maybe I'll have to eat my words at some point, but right now, we don't cap cases. Some prosecutors, I'm sorry, some Public Defenders, even in Nebraska, have a caseload cap, and once they reach that number, they go to the judge and say, we're not taking any more cases, and the county has to pay for private attorneys to handle the cases. We have been able to avoid that because we keep a close eye on the caseload for each lawyer. Martha is responsible for that and does a great job. We rely on self-reporting from the lawyers. If they say, hey man, I'm swamped, then we do stuff. We do things to help them, to alleviate that problem, whether that be shift some of the cases to another lawyer, whether it is have one of the supervisors help them to move the cases along. So I don't ever want to be in a position where I'm telling the judge, we can't handle this, we'll figure it out. And when we've gotten to the point where I thought we needed another lawyer, I've come to you and asked for one, and you have always complied favorably when I made that ask. As you can see also, you know, we have the additional trial assistants, and having young lawyers learn how to do serious cases is a really important thing because of the turnover in these kinds of offices. So when it comes to serious cases, obviously, you're not going to give a young lawyer who's been in practice for two or three years a first-degree sexual assault or a homicide, and say, here, good luck. So what we do is we have the younger lawyer's second or third chair on a senior lawyer, and participate in the whole case with them. Sometimes they take some of the witnesses, sometimes they don't. I'm quadruple A personality, as you know, and I'm not very good at delegating, so, but some of the others are, the other lawyers that are senior lawyers are good at it, and they're great mentors, and it's a way for us to keep, keep us able to say, I don't need a case cap. Because after a younger lawyer for three or four years had been involved in some serious cases, you get, you go talk to them, bring them in the office, say, okay, I think you're ready to first chair some of these, you tell me if you don't feel comfortable. And of course, most of them are eager beavers and want to do it, but we'll still put a second chair with them, especially on the first go-round with another experienced lawyer. The free CLE, I already talked about with, as far as the OBA goes, but also, we put on our own in-house CLE, I think I've told you about this in the past. That entails us putting a program together, having it approved by the Bar Association. You can't just go and put something together and say, okay, here it is, and here's how many hours we did. You have to get it approved first. And we have batted a thousand on putting these programs together and getting them approved. So I frown on sending people to CLE in, you know, resort areas, if I can avoid it, much to the chagrin of some of my lawyers, they would love to go to Las Vegas and go to the How to Handle a Drug Case seminar put on by the National Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers, but for the most part, we don't do that. We have had some where we have obtained scholarships from, a lot of these places will give scholarships to Public Defenders, and either let you do it for free, or give you an extremely reduced rate. So, yeah, we have done some of that. Amazingly, they don't have any of these in Bismarck, North Dakota. They're always in Miami, or Vegas, or LA, or DC. As far as other cost-saving measures, we have Spanish-speaking lawyers, we have, our support staff is full of Spanish speakers, which allows us to avoid having to hire interpreters for going over to the jail to talk to the client. If we didn't have these folks, we would have to hire someone. The vast majority of the non-English speakers are Spanish speakers, but we're having an increased number of others, and we do have to pay for them, some of the languages that are less common. As I've told you in the past, while the County Attorney's Office has a civil division, and we don't, we handle all the misdemeanors that are filed by the city prosecutor's office. The County Attorney's Office handles DV misdemeanors, but we handle against the city prosecutor's office somewhere in the area of 6,000 to 7,000 misdemeanors every year. We also do our own appeals, and the County Attorney's Office, whether, I'm sure they'd prefer to do them themselves, but under the law, the AG's office does the appeals, and I know I've had plenty of conversations with Don about, God, I read your brief, and I read the AG's brief, and, well, I'll just leave it at that, but suffice to say that that's something that, while we don't do civil, there are some things that we do that they don't do, so it kind of balances off a little. We also do non-supports at the request of the board. We handle people who could go to jail for failed child support, and also at the request of the board, we've handled cases in juvenile court. We call them parent cases, they're three A's, where an individual is in danger of losing their parental rights. And we do it because a lot of times, there's a criminal case associated with it. And it's, to me, it's not a very good service to a client to have multiple lawyers for the kind of the same fact situation. And the last thing I want to say is, I, after I listened to Don's presentation, I got a little squeamish, because I sent this letter out before I watched the legislature talk about capping local government spending. And I put in here, in my letter, that I reluctantly am not asking for more attorneys because I think we can get through. And then I heard Don saying, well, we need some more lawyers, and uh-oh. Well, I'm going to stay the course and hope that we'll be okay. I'm very nervous about what's going to happen in this special session. You know, I've heard you talk about unfunded mandates, et cetera. Well, defense of poor people who can't afford an attorney is not something that we have a choice on. The government has to pay for it if they're indigent, and if they're in danger of losing their freedom. The Constitution guarantees the right to counsel. I've heard some things about, maybe some law enforcement exceptions to the cap. I would prefer that it be criminal justice, because I doubt they're going to call me law enforcement. But damn it, we're in the criminal justice system, just like prosecutors, and the jail people, and the police, et cetera. So I'm somewhat concerned about that. None of us know for sure what's going to happen, and I'm hoping that if there is a cap, which I think is not very well-advised, but if there is, that there's some type of criminal justice exception, because I don't anticipate the crime rate decreasing to the degree that we can start cutting lawyers loose because we don't have a sufficient caseload. So with that, I'll be happy to, I'm sorry I droned on a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure I touched all the bases, I guess.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, and all of these today are just presentation, no action will be taken today. With that in mind, is there any questions for Public Defender Riley and team? If not, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Douglas County Sheriff's Department on the 2425 budget as well.
Good morning.
Almost good afternoon. Please don't be intimidated at the fact that we have 49 slides here. Some of these will be grouped together as we explain our various positions on a couple of asks that we're making, and hopefully can build a larger grand picture of the state of affairs and the future for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. So today, our budget presentation will be broken into two parts. I'll be giving you an overview of the requested budget, along with some historical trends for the department. A second part of our presentation will focus on the staffing and patrolling, securing businesses and residential securing businesses and residential expansion specifically in the Irvington corridor. Additionally, we're going to have some discussion concerning the cost of our non-wages as they increase and have increased, and what we've done to manage those over the last two and three years, which we're finding more difficult to do as each passing year goes by. I should start off by congratulating the leadership of Douglas County. We've now surpassed all counties in the nation as the largest growing economy in the United States. That is for that reason why we're here today, and how it affects law enforcement and public safety, and the growth that not only economically will occur, but then the infrastructure that has to support that. We've been asked many times, both in meetings and public settings, what are the statutory duties and obligations funded and unfunded for the sheriff's office? Mr. Friend and I had a humorous exchange, I think a couple of weeks ago, with regard to what is funded. And I gave him a very short answer. Everything you see before you, it's, and I didn't list them all. There's approximately 13, 14 mandates that tells the sheriff what he will do and will not do. Specifically, what he will do and what he's responsible for, or a sheriff, I should say, is responsible for. To include taxation, helping the treasurer to recover taxes, and then securing the courts by judicial rule. The overview, you can see our current adjusted budget, the target that was set for us, and our ask at 23 and roughly 536 million. The reason for, we've talked about this and we'll go into a little bit further is we've been able to keep our non-wage down. Traditionally, we go about 1.8 to 2.1 million in non-wage. And we've done that in the past years when I first started becoming associated with the budget. We've been successful in keeping that down for several reasons. One, in our effort to grow non-wage. Certainly, we had, we're faced like corrections with some great staff shortages, which is not good for the sheriff's office, nor is it for the Douglas County community. However, from a financial standpoint, it afforded us some surpluses in wage categories in which, working with finance office, it was recommended and we agreed that we should monitor our non-wage growth for the next couple of years by encumbering money and trying to keep, keep in balance those non-wage items that we have. My only comment to that is, as staffing normalizes, which it has, that's a business model that's really unsustainable. And we have to be faced with reality that we'll be slowly filtering back towards our higher non-wage items, which are, which have never gone away, it's just that we have kept them suppressed with our surpluses. So today, for an overview, thank you. For an overview, our ask is about 798, 711 over the target. Where there is some offsetting revenue of 100 and an additional one for 70,000, which keeps the net impact to the budget at 628. Overall, that's a growth factor from one budget to the next of 5.4%. That will be relevant later on as we talk about where we're at. I'll briefly go through these slides, if you'll indulge me. We had the same slide last year, and it hasn't changed much. Overall, the sheriff's office presents about 7% of the general fund and about 4% of the overall county budget. That is in contrast to where your Omaha Police Public Safety is roughly about 13%. We haven't received the new budget numbers from the mayor's office yet. What does that mean for us going forward to next year for our proposal? It's roughly a change of growth, of course, in personnel costs, and then 1.1 in non-personnel cost. About 95% wage and 4.8% non-wage. That's really not an ideal situation if you do what I do for, and have done for the last several years. We, that, it's roughly equivalent to have a tall building that doesn't have a base to it. It's bound to topple over if you continue to add to the wage category, which we still need to do, but don't shore up that, that base piece. It's gonna, it's like having a pole in the ground, it's going to topple over. By comparison, to give you some frame of reference, the Omaha Police has roughly 88% on wage and slightly over 11% for non-wage, and that's how they keep in balance. Just a quick snapshot of where we've, how we've grown since 2010. I've been around since 2000. And we tend to grow in increments of about five, between 5 and 6% every year regardless. We do that through funded and unfunded growth. And we try and keep pace with what's going on in the county with regard to more residents coming in, more mandates that are thrust upon the sheriff and his office. But we don't shirk our responsibility when we're asking for more monies. We typically have grown roughly over the past five, six years, about 5% annually, which if you keep in mind what we're asking for, is in that same range, at 5.41% growth, I believe. What we do to try and offset that, I know it's very important to Commissioner Boyle that we demonstrate, and we will, where we've saved, what we've cut. With a 95% personnel, there's only so much you can cut without laying people off. So we try and focus on those non-wage items as best we can, revenue and efficiency. So if we're going to ask to grow, we're at least coming back to the table with more revenue to the county to soften that blow. And this is also a very quick snapshot. So I believe we've been able to demonstrate pretty clearly that although we have grown and will continue to grow, we do our due diligence to try and bring that revenue to keep on pace, at least parallel with, with the revenue and the expenses. I'd like to talk a little bit about revenue. I think we reported next year that we anticipate about 4.6 million in revenue. And when I was going through the numbers, and I've gone through the numbers for the last couple of years, I was always scratching my head as to, we had always planned for civil proceeds. We devote, by statute, by statute, the sheriff's office is ordered to assist with the collection of taxes, notice issued, distress warrants, affidavits of poverty. That's accomplished by the sheriff's office and the sheriff's office alone. Why that's relevant is, with a five-year study, I looked back through the records and I couldn't find any of that revenue. And what I, through working through the clerk's office and what I finally determined was, and validated, was that that money, when we get it, doesn't come to the sheriff's office and it's not recorded in our revenue. There is a five-year study there. We've, over the five-year period of time, we've recovered 515 million of the 9 million out there in distress and active distress warrants and accelerated distress warrants. That averages 1.5 million a year of revenue that we are not reporting. It is coming to the county, it's just not coming through the sheriff's office. So I just wanted to point that out, that we don't come to the table without something in our pocket. And we'll go very quickly through these as well. We're here because of growth. Expansive growth in the Western Douglas County area. The Irvington area is growing exponentially as well. And I'll, there's a population change map or two that we'll just briefly go through, so we won't. And those are available to everyone to study because they're available through GIS. Three-year snapshot, and then we'll continue to speak of this. The per-current growth is going on, you can see, it goes and the city goes down. The Douglas County interlocals with Waterloo, Bennington Valley, we answer about 25% of their calls as it is, and let alone them handling their own calls. So we ended up doing a lot of their work, and we, and we work very well together. But even without, outside of those jurisdictions, the growth that you're going to see has to do with new SIDs that are not in their jurisdiction, nor are they in the city yet. And don't anticipate having them annexed for quite some time. And these are just brief overviews of your growth that you're going to see. What I really want, and this slide here really just focuses on where that district car goes all the time. And it's an expansive area. So to have one or two cars out there and working is not an ideal business model for the citizens or for the sheriff's safety. Where I really want to focus attention is the SIDs that are plotted. You'll see for you, and if you hit the next slide, sir. There's approximately 3,681 plotted or planned for all of those SIDs. Only one or two of those in the Irvington area. If you do the multiplier of 2.6, you're looking at over 9,000. You know, that's almost 10% growth in the county plan for the next 12 to 15 months. 5% of that is strictly to the Irvington area. Why is that important? Well, as it states currently, we handle all crimes for service, calls for service. You've got four, go back. Right there. So those highlighted in yellow are projected communities. We answer a great number of calls, if you could point in that red area of Aspen Grove and Irvington Heights. The items that are highlighted, and those areas that are highlighted in yellow are determined to be, projected to be low-income elderly support-type homes, which will demand greater services of us. We consider them to be, and they have proven to be, both with Irvington Fire and with the sheriff's office, to be our super, super consumer groups. We spend a great deal of time up there. It was important for us not to just project that they're moving in here, we're going to need more. We did some staff studies on current call loads, crime trends. And we can clearly demonstrate that the calls for service will go up. Our predicted cases for the prosecution for investigative, for prosecution for the public defender's office, all of those are going to go up as, just for the Irvington growth alone, let alone the other parts of Douglas County. Where really, another large obligation we will have is the commercial growth that's going on in the Irvington area. For the hard and soft targets for terrorism, anti-terrorism, the retail theft, the high-end theft will occur. And that, that is also occurring, and they have high expectations of their local law enforcement to make sure those areas remain secure. So as super consumers, and there's going to be all types of affordable, high-density housing in the Irvington area, which will occur within the next 12 to 15 months. The crimes of those areas and those areas tend to be about, again, crimes against person, assaults, robberies, stabbings, shootings, et cetera, and then medical calls. Will need to have supplemental personnel in those areas in order to handle that, and then handle the subsequent load at the courthouse. I could have handled this when we talked about the distress warrants. So the distress warrants that we roughly gather 1.5 million a year for the county's general fund. There's a, people that were smarter than me that kind of figured out, that worked in that division, our four people that we have working that, they only work the high-end ones, the 500,000, the 100,000, the 200, that are over. Because they're the hardest to work, they take the most time. It causes business owners, and if they're individuals, we have to seize property sometimes. And although they finally ultimately do it, it eats up a lot of man-hours. And what results is that the, what they call the low-hanging fruit, the low-dollar ones, don't get worked. And you would sit here and say, well, what's the big deal with that, other than the trend was those low-dollar ones, $1,000, $750, people pay those immediately. So the turnaround is whatnot. So we decided to do an experiment, hired a retired part-time deputy at 25, 29,500 to work just those, you know, the low-hanging fruit, the low-dollar ones. To date, and he's only been there nine months, he's, he's already tripled what he has. He's currently recovered $80,000, and he's already projected to be about 100,000 before the end of the fiscal year. So it only makes sense to us that we would retain him on staff and continue to have him work those lower-end warrants, if not expand that, that division, or at least the part-time, to get those, those numbers up as revenue to the county. What we're mainly here to talk about, other than personnel today, specifically is, and the public defender touched on it very eloquently, is IT, technical operations. So with that 4.8%, the roughly 1.1 million dollars that we're asking to grow back to, about 60% of that is IT, is technology that we can't avoid. We can't get around it, we can't get rid of it. It's investigative, it's safety, has to do with the desktops we do, laptops, the body-worn cameras, in-car cameras, radios, servers, all the programs we use to connect the criminal justice to the criminal justice world. And if it touches the internet, it has to be CEGIS compliant. There's just no way around that. In days of old, and I've been around long enough and working, mentoring through the budget program, we didn't used to buy warranties or maintenance agreements. We would say, no, thank you, it's an extra couple thousand dollars a year per program, per device. And that's how we saved a great deal of money by not buying, not doing that. That's not an option anymore. As things evolve, both with the vendors and with the federal government, they tell us you can't do that. You must upgrade, you must have the most current version of every software, or you must have your hardware under maintenance agreements. If you don't, you're out of CEGIS, well, the company won't upgrade you. If you don't buy their warranty, if you don't buy their maintenance agreement, they won't upgrade you. It's as simple as that. It's a chicken and egg process or prospect. If you don't upgrade, then you're in federal, you're in violation of CEGIS requirements. If we're sanctioned, they will unplug us, or could unplug us, from all of our activities, both investigative and patrol. So we kind of get held hostage, as does anybody else in the IT world, with CEGIS compliance. And I don't think anybody quite realizes how much of the non-wage that we have eats up that fund. And with that, we have very little left to handle other non-wage items, trying to build up and keep up with equipment. And I already touched on this. What we need for these investigative tools, both software and hardware, is to keep current, to keep up with the law, to keep up with things that not only find evidence, but also find exculpatory evidence and exonerate people. We need to touch briefly on our body-worn camera program. We'll go very briefly over this. Two years ago, we were successful in implementing our body-worn camera program. We worked with the county, we worked with the vendor to say, listen, let's do the bare minimum that we need to do. We've got 146 cameras for multiple deputies. What we have them doing is actually not checking them out, or checking them out, excuse me. They don't wear them home, they don't get to carry them on part-times. That only gives us a minimum coverage for them. We've had two incidents this year alone, one with our own deputy, who became involved in a shooting off-duty on his way to work. And then I know the Omaha Police also had a shooting where no, no body cam was used or available because of the off-duty aspect of that. We feel it's imperative to expand the body-worn camera program so that every deputy who's coming and going has a body-worn camera. That doesn't, it sounds like a huge prospect, but it results in additional 25 cameras and the cloud storage that's associated with that, so that we can accommodate that back-and-forth travel and off-duty use to cover the deputies and the citizens for anything that's captured on those. All right, we also like to talk about TASER. So formerly, we've worked through, and Axon was a group that you just became familiar with, with Mr. Riley. They do have a cause I monopoly on things. And we are bound to them by contract to, and they are the only play, they are the only game in town when it comes to intermediate weapons or to non-lethal weapons. And we used to have the TASER X26, which is no longer supported. We had several of them that were malfunctioning and actually shocking deputies during tests, test procedures. And quite frankly, our inside information with Axon tells us that they will be obsolete. They are no longer funded and they'll be obsolete within a year, and then you're stuck with nothing. We already know through our communications with the county attorney's office that once you have a, introduce a less-than-lethal platform to an agency, you don't, you dare not remove it for something happen. What that does is bring us into the realm of TASER 10, for which we were able to negotiate a contract with them over the five-year period of time in excess of $479,000 for the next, for the next four years. What we did to reduce costs on that was the sheriff's office used seizure funds to pay the first two payments last year at once. They were, they were willing to accept that. And we owe them another 92,500 a year for the next four years. What we're asking you here today is to share that with us and split that at $46,000 until we can get that paid off. With that, we moved to our fleet. Currently, we have a fleet of 78 units, all of which have to be outfitted with mobile units. We currently use the Mobile 3 system, the L3 Safe system, which expired as far as maintenance. We currently use the Mobile 3 system, the L3 Safe system, which expired as far as maintenance agreements, or will expire very soon and is unsupported. It is faulty, the servers don't work anymore. We have lost accidents and pursuits and things of that nature, and they no longer will even sell some of the components for the drive that keeps this. So we have it piecemealed together. What we've done, since we're partnering with GTAC and the Body-Worn Camera, is to slowly purchase with surplus funds every year, five to 10 units annually. Those setups, which you'll see later on for one vehicle, pushes us near the $8,000 mark per vehicle, if not more. And we've been doing that slowly, five to 10 units. We've worked with GTAC very recently at an event to try and get this taken care of in a more efficient manner. The costs of those cameras go up as much as 10% annually. If I project that over the next five, six years, we're going to be paying well into the 500, 600,000 mark, just to get our fleet done, and then we're going to have to start all over again. We've entered some negotiations with GTAC, that we're willing to give all of those cameras upfront now at an annual payment, and they've thrown in cloud storage and reduced our cloud storage to sweeten the pot for us. So what we're trying to do is implement a five-year program to pay for those body, for those in-car cameras, get them done now, so that they are legal, they're compliant with CEGIS, they sync with the body cams, no evidence will be lost, it's going to protect the citizens, it's going to protect the Sheriff's Office, plus it will keep us saving money from having to just keep piecemeal buying it over an extended period of time. This is an important graphic for us. When we talk about non-wage, after we've paid all of our ITs, after we've paid our vendors, we're still faced with one-time expenses and then recurring expenses as equipment wears out to outfit deputies. And I won't pour over this, because it's certainly available to you, but the county pays for our vehicles, the county garage buys our vehicles, and they buy some of the components. But everything within that vehicle that you see is purchased by the Sheriff's Office. The racks, the computers, the printers, the graphics, the weapons racks, and every deputy has a license. I know that Mr. Riley spoke to, we don't pay for, some programs we pay for individuals, but most of the time, they see you have 160X people in your department, this is how much it costs. And again, some of that is annual cost, and then some of it is, you know, as we replace a camera, as we replace a computer, which is also important. The big question is, what have we done to cut, reduce spending? And I'll go over those very, very quickly. In years past, we spoke of this. We've used our non-wage, excuse me, our wage-related surpluses, which we anticipate not having, to pay down, buy down, pay two years in advance, things of those with our vendors, and we've been very successful in doing that. We don't anticipate to be, continue to be able to do that business model. We are currently slotted to be at full staff, I think, by next month, and we anticipate that we have the ability to plus up with a very robust lateral list that we have looked at, and we do not want to pass up on potential good applicants when we are just now starting to see momentum in the recruiting field. It would be irresponsible of us to not try and gauge some of our attrition and keep at a level. When you do that, it's a good thing, but it also eats up the funds as intended for personnel and doesn't leave them available for non-wage. All right, briefly summary. So what have we done? Again, without cutting personnel, reorganization becomes key to us, becoming efficient, trying to get the court services down where more than one unit is helping, with the warrants unit helping some of the process, the sworn proceeds, deputies being able to step over. Some of those efficiencies keep us to, allow us to slow down how much we hire, not that we can stop hiring, but at least we can keep it at bay for a little while. We have been able to secure a second round of funding on a different fund for our co-responder, so rather than putting her into the budget, we just left her out of the budget, and we'll get that reimbursed through a JAG that we're able to change and move from another source. We still rely on foundations, other for most of our K-9. We also did a training and travel study. We travel far less than we did five, 10 years ago. We bring, we invested some time and money in bringing trainers and certifying our own trainers to be master instructors. So as fun as it is to go to Vegas and Palm Beach and all those things, we do very little of that, if none at all, and most training that's associated with travel is mandatory training to do certifications, for which we have no choice, we have to send them. So being able to reduce travel has been very key for us. Again, we're limiting our acting supervisor pay, using encumbered funds as much as we can. One of the things we looked at, which we've been meaning to get to, is to look at our crime lab and our chemistry division. Crime lab, we felt we were way under market in what we charge outside agencies to do crime lab. We go to all of the counties, as you know, to do fingerprinting, to do whatever. So we're looking at doubling our fees, pretty much, and bring in revenue, and most, everybody that has heard that is like, what's, you know, kind of like, it's about time. They've been getting off fairly cheaply. The chemistry lab, you know, we pay an exorbitant amount of money keeping a chemistry lab going, servicing all these counties that aren't ours. They do pay us, however, it doesn't, it ends up upside down. So we decided as a command group that we're going to handle only Douglas County. That savings is seen in that, yes, we're losing some revenue from these outside counties, however, we're paying less overtime, we're certainly paying less in chemis, you know, these machines take certain chemicals, so production is lost, or excuse me, is made more efficient. A lot of our work that we do is, sounds like fluff, but we do a lot of negotiating with some of these contractors to give us longer terms for caps. Instead of the 5, 10, 20% growth that IT can do, we can get it down to 2.5% growth or 3% growth. We're still spending money, and we're not going to avoid that, but what we can do is manage it. One anomaly that has occurred since my existence here is overtime. People prefer to take comp time and time off is really where it's at. So we have been able to reduce our overtime amounts a little bit each year, and you always, you always get nervous about it to have enough on this, you don't have to come back to supplementary budget, but we've consistently been able to chip down our overtime planning, which is significant savings for everyone, especially if I don't have to come back in supplementary budget and get that or request that. The county garage does a great job of keeping us outfitted with vehicles, but they only have so much that they can do as well. This year alone, we've entered into three different task forces, with not only bringing money in as a replacement for overtime, but they also provide a vehicle. Now, it certainly costs the federal government and the federal taxpayers, but it's not costing the county. They pay for the gas, they pay for the maintenance, they pay for the vehicle, and that becomes a direct reimbursement. That's three vehicles we don't have to get from the county. All right, well, really, we'll just go quickly over the summary, if you could go back, or actually go advanced one, please. Our summary goes in line. The personnel costs associated with the growth in Irvington, investigative growth that we need, as well as the courts and road patrol. Personnel costs associated with a civilian executive communication specialist with sheriff handsome we'll speak to. We'd like to retain the part-time retired deputy, he is making us money, he is not causing us to lose money. The body cam program we talked about, we certainly talked about the less-than-lethal platform that we must have, that we're asking for assistance on. We're asking to partner with the board with regard to keeping our fleet up to date and being current. The Motorola contract is a 10-year contract that was negotiated, I believe, two, three years ago. We have taken that out of our budget request and used surplus funds for several years in a row. We're asking to build it back in. We have paid the first year of FLOC license plate reader program, which we use extensively with our investigative units, and have resulted in a great number of homicide cases, high-dollar theft items that we have been able to solve. And that is the future, and it is one of those, that is scarcely a luxury as you go through time, and we do not want to be caught without access to that and getting in on the ground level. What that does for us? So the summary is this, we're trying to make and address the Irvington growth and the SID growth that's going to occur by 10% in the western Douglas County area. We want to be preferably ahead of the game, instead of behind the, you know, the power of the game, the ball, they say. We certainly believe there's merit in establishing a civilian position for executive communication. With the level of communication that the Sheriff's Office does and brings to the county, it makes sense for a professional to do so. We'd like to maintain the part-time person that we have, and then we spoke to the non-wage items such as the body cam, the TASER, and the in-car. So I have a brief presentation that Chief Nemock's going to bring forward, it's almost near the end, it's going to tell you where we're at staffing-wise and where we're trying to get, and then we'll open the floor for any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you all. Will Nemock, Chief Deputy of Operations, and thanks, Chief Rinn. I'll make this very, very quick. Over the course of the past approximately six months or less, the Sheriff's Office has tried to do our due diligence in terms of research of where we're at in terms of our operational needs, as well as where our comparables are at. Agencies that would have either a population base, unincorporated.
Chief Deputy Nemock, let me, I don't forget doing the same thing as last week, can you push that right microphone over, like, out for, okay, there we go.
There we go. I was getting the interference as well, so sorry about that.
No, you're good.
So through that research study, what we, it was conducted in three different directions, our court services, our investigative side of things, as well as our patrol side of things. Each of those are somewhat independent of each other. Patrol and investigations are somewhat interlinked, but court services is rather unique in the respect that it sometimes and most often deals with both unincorporated growth as well as incorporated growth. The people coming through the courthouse, persons arrested by, as an example, OPD that need transported over for courts affects the Sheriff's Office indirectly in that respect. So in those studies, we found that we are short from where we're at. How did we get here? The numbers you see are rather large, and we realize that that shortage isn't going to be addressed in the short term. It's not going to be solved, you know, and/or resolved in the near future. But because law enforcement is a critical infrastructure, what we did is, within this past year and a matter of months, we've reorganized every bit of resource that we have. So every bureau, our three bureaus have all been reorganized, or, well, I should say our third bureau is due to be reorganized in July. That reorganization is to fold in every bit of opportunity that we have to increase our efficiency, to overlap where we can for personnel and operational productivity, so that despite the shortages, that we can maintain a professional service at a level that is commensurate to what citizens of Douglas County expect, and that is, you know, should be the best practice available. So how did we get here? It wasn't any one thing, other than what growth we have represented through the years did not immediately address that strategic need. There was no sense connection, per se, for that growth that Chief Rinn spoke of, of, you know, fastest-growing county, a lot of commercial and industrial and residential growth, which is fantastic, and our opportunity to match that hasn't been a one-for-one over the years. And so that really put emphasis on that, the efficiencies of our organization, and to date, that has helped. What we recognize as like in any strategic goal, is the need to realize our strengths and weaknesses and address those over time. So the numbers you see on this quick chart here represent the results of that study in three different directions for patrol, criminal investigations, and court security. And what we plan to do is, our last bit of reorganization in July, to, I say, earlier, is maximize what resources we do have, and then attempt to slowly build towards further strengthening those directions to address the growth that Chief Rinn pointed out earlier. And because the shortages are something that just the Sheriff's Office, that we're just pointing to wanting more, everybody wants more, that's understandable. This is to affect, you know, the best practice in law enforcement, you know, production. It is to address very directly the concerns of the judges in this building and the concerns for public safety outside this building. So with that, I am finished, and I'll hand it over to the sheriff.
Well, thank you very much. I'll keep my comments brief. Exceptional job by the chiefs, I do appreciate all their hard work on this presentation. You know, the recent tornado, I think, is prime evidence, number one. 71% of that tornado damage was in unincorporated Douglas County, 71%. That means 71% of that damage, it was Douglas County Sheriff's deputies that were pulling people out of rubble, along with firefighters funded by rural fire districts, 71%. That's why we have to make sure we're keeping that strong balance between meeting the needs of the courthouse, but also meeting the needs of those 90,000 people that live in unincorporated Douglas County, those 90,000 people of which, if that was a city, would be the third-largest city in Nebraska. We'll gladly take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Sheriff, and deputy sheriffs, chief deputies, I mean. We'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
There we go. I really appreciate this presentation. It's really interesting just to get down to the nitty-gritty and understand the nuts and bolts of how the Sheriff's Department works. I think seeing the operations is something that, it's really important for everyone to know kind of what everything entails there, too. I also like that you referenced how I'm always a fan of showing me efficiencies. I think that's the thing that really will helps us understand best, what are you trying to do to make things better? Having said that, I think it's kind of a tough, tough dollar amount to swallow, just because we're dealing with, not operationally, but up here, this, where's this money coming from? If, I know you have unfunded mandates, and we do too, so if you're asking for money from us, we'd like to get it from the state, it's like, we ended up in this vicious cycle where the money is, what if the money's just not there? We have to deal with as a board, things like, who should we cut if we give you this funding, or who should be taxed to support these requests? And so I know the Sheriff's Department consistently comes up with requesting supplemental budgets, and it's, you obviously presented the case as to why. So there are other thoughts that, you know, I know with the City of Omaha, maybe annexing more, do we have to continue to expand the Sheriff's Department when the footprint of the Sheriff of Douglas County is decreasing, when Omaha's jurisdiction should be taking care of some of that? So it's more than anything, those are the thoughts going through my head as we look at some of this. I mean, that's a lot of money to ask for, we have to think of where we're going to get it, and if there's any way you can, you know, just like the public defender is able to, he said he's going to go tight and try to hold off an attorney. I mean, those are things to consider. If wages are the biggest expense, I mean, as opposed to the operating expenses versus wages is the biggest percent you're talking about, or concern you're talking about is the proportion between those two, then keeping wages steady would help bring that proportion down to something more reasonable about what you're pointing out. So anyway, it's just more than anything, just a thought, as to the things that we are concerned about, it's going to be really tough, because we don't know what the legislature's going to do with the potential special session and how it's going to affect Douglas County revenue. So anyway, just more than anything, just, those are the thoughts in our heads. I appreciate the presentation, I love the fact you brought up efficiency, as we've spoken before, but those are the things that kind of concern me.
Commissioner, absolutely, point well taken. I don't envy the position that the board has, is in, because just as we internally have had to prioritize assignments and deployments of resources and not investing in infrastructure that we know we need to invest in and we should have probably years ago. that we know we need to invest in and we should have probably years ago, we know that you likewise have tough choices, too. That you're going to have to make a choice between certain state mandated obligations of county government versus non-state-funded efforts. And we know that's a tough choice. What we're doing here is, it's the process of education. We think that's important moving forward. Reason why this slide here is so important, showing the best practices in other agencies, the, what you see here with the lack of deputies in these different areas, it has less to do with us as individuals and more to do about a lack of services to the public. I was just in a judge's chambers yesterday, a presiding judge in the next building in the courthouse, very seriously wanting more deputies over in the courthouse to keep them safe.
Right.
And we're going to do the best we can.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll jump to Commissioner Morgan.
I think your increase is less than three percent, just a little bit less, over the last year. And we did hear last week, I think it was, the judges talking or signing the letter about the need. And I think you mentioned that twenty-five percent, I think in your presentation, you're answering the calls out in Elkhorn or wherever, even those, the annex areas. I know that's still taking place. Is that accurate? I think you said twenty-five percent?
Yeah, that's a little high. Roughly twenty percent of our local calls are when there's no one on duty in Waterloo, Valley, Bennington, those areas like that.
End to me.
Or assisting as a second car. There may be somebody on duty, however, certain priority calls mandate by common sense and protocol that there be a two officer there, so we have to go and back them up.
Yeah. And I've had the calls, and I think others on this board have too, you know, that they do expect the sheriff to come out because someone else isn't coming out as quickly as they'd like in the annex area. So that's an issue that we deal with because there isn't anything, in my view, more important than the public safety, period. And then the public safety of our court system and this building, I mean, that you're constantly working at. And what we've seen, the pictures of the kind of weapons people have tried to bring into this building over the last months, weeks, which we never used to even have the security at this building some years ago like we have today. So there's some difficult challenges ahead for all of us, but appreciate what you're doing and what you respond to. And I know how the sheriff has covered other areas like the calls on Seventy-seventh and Cass, for example, and some of the other places. So we thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll jump to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me share my, let me share Commissioner Boyle's comments, but, man, I've got three questions, maybe four, depending on how they answer. What's your philosophy in Irvington now? Because the way the presentation sounds, it's like you're not patrolling Irvington, and now you need to increase the presence in Irvington. So what's your philosophy in Irvington?
No, that's, if you got that impression, it was not me not properly communicating. We spend a great deal of our time patrolling and policing and investigating in Irvington. That district car or cars that are assigned to that particular district spend a, they could use a substation there. And the bad part of that is that those district cars are also responsible for Ponca Hills. So when they get called away from Irvington, I go all the way to Ponca Hills, it's either do we not go to Ponca Hills, or do we stay in Irvington and try and address calls for service, back up Irvington Fire, or suppress crime? So we're trying to find some relief and some, there will be future relief needed to keep more patrols in those Irvington areas, plural, when they, when they are, one, for the current one, that already has two facilities, and then as the other ones grow.
Yeah, I'm curious about the slide you made on the corporate growth, because I'm assuming corporate growth would bring people in. And, I mean, what, I'm assuming Google, PayPal, and these guys, they've got to have some ownership of their own security. So how is that, how is that falling on you all?
Certainly, we have a anti-terrorism platform that we follow, and the sheriff is part of the JTTF, and we have a deputy. So as threats come in and as our threat levels rise, they become yet another hard or soft target that we have to put extra security on, extra checks, devote time to, even though they have implant security going on, the sworn department is, it's incumbent on them to take them on.
So Ben, you, since you declared it under home ass security, is there some federal reimbursement to it?
Yeah, you know, we're in communications with those corporate partners to see if there's any opportunities for them to help us offset some of the additional responsibility costs that will be absorbed by their presence in unincorporated Douglas County. But also keep in mind, we've already had multiple cases in which, whether it's the Google complex or the new OPPD complex, there's been a series of thefts that have occurred, either wallets under construction, and those are things that either have to be responded to for investigative purposes or require additional proactive patrols on the front end. Many of these entities do have their security, however, they are not sworn security. In many cases, they're not armed security. So it does increase our obligation to keep their facility safe. Whether there's federal funding opportunities, we hope to pursue that to see if that's possible.
No, I mean, I appreciate your comment on you all here to educate. So that's why I'm saying, I mean, educate because it feels like you're never going to staff up to prevent enough half of people are forced to prevent something from going on out there at the corporate facility. That's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't, I didn't hear. Can you repeat that?
When you, it sounds like we're trying to, well, I'm interpreting like we're trying to staff to prevent this from happening. And that's why I'm trying to get at to say, they have some ownership of it, they got their prevention. It seems like you're doing the investigation and the backup to help them. It feels like you're trying to take on the role to prevent that by increasing, which that feels like an impossible task.
Are you speaking of the?
Corporate Googles and PayPal.
Well, if you look at those corporate partners, there is some very specific threats that do happen, political-type threats that do happen against those entities, which could require and would require law enforcement response.
That's time. Thank you. Commissioner Rinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the information, gentlemen. One of the things Commissioner Boyle, I think, asked the question a little bit earlier, and it kind of, kind of made me think about this a little bit. As you all know, the annexation by a metropolitan-class city is pretty complicated. So, and we've seen that over the years. So, and it has to do not just with encumbering a much debt, potential debt. So they hesitate or they drive based on the debt of a particular SID or a certain area. That being said, the, along with specific expenses that are going to be related to a city of Omaha actually having to provide this service, right? So when the city of Omaha, I want your experience here, when a city like Omaha makes an annual or occasional annexation effort or sends up a flag and says, hey, we're going in this direction, do they communicate that stuff with you guys ahead of time? Has there been good communication in that regard? Because it's going to change a little bit of the way you do your job, right?
Great question. So we just met with the, with the City of Omaha Planning Director, Dave Fancle, yesterday, as well as a member of the Omaha Planning Board, Mike Pay, to have that very conversation. They're obviously good team players with us. You know, we do want development and growth in the city of Omaha, especially in that three-mile ETJ zone. However, we are responsible for that three-mile ETJ zone and an area beyond that. It's the county's responsibility to keep it safe from law enforcement purposes. The county does have interplay with the rural fire departments. They do help set that mill levy for the rural or suburban fire departments. And so what we found in our meeting yesterday is there had been no previous communication between the City of Omaha Planning Department, the Planning Board, and necessarily this board, or the sheriff's office, or the rural fire departments. That communication is going to occur moving forward, not only on the front end with the applications for development, but also immediately after those developments are approved by the Planning Board. They're going to send this board, sheriff's office, and the rural fire department that's responsible for that area, notification of the incoming development. How many plots, how many residential or multifamily dwellings will be in there? That'll be very helpful for our strategic planning because, as Commissioner Boyle indicated, there will be future annexation, but usually that does not happen until those developments are mature and their debt levels are down. That could take decades, sometimes two or three.
And I would just make one additional note there, is even during a situation that involves an annexation, the population that is annexed relates that particular business to our court services division, annexed or not. Again, court assignments, transportation assignments, warrants, behavioral, health-related things such as BMH pickups, immediate custody pickups for juvenile services and like.
Well, you're, thank you. Well, you're, switching gears real quick, I only have thirty seconds, I don't know how much time it would take to answer, but when you get closer to those authorized staffing levels, when you get closer to the staffing levels that you feel you need, is it your experience it'll reduce that overtime cost a little bit? I mean, kind of like corrections did, right? Or am I comparing apples to oranges?
No, it's a common sense indicator that we don't have to, we don't have nearly the situation of forced overtime, that usually it's volunteer. And quite frankly, they volunteer for comp time more, mostly, which is why we've been able to cut, at least project cutting overtime down.
Okay, thanks.
We'll jump to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to start off by saying I've also been falsely accused of being anti-police, so I hope that my comments and questions aren't taken as being anti-police. But I would love to have a copy of your slides. Those were very, very good. And then throughout your book here, you have the encumbered, and some of it says encumbered 2023, some of it says 2024. Can you make a list of those encumbered funds and what they're for?
Yes, I can.
Just separate from, like, being embedded in all of the material?
I can do that, and we can also work with the Sherri Albin. She is able to run those specific reports in Oracle as to show where encumbered for every county entity that you have, what they have pulled aside for encumbrance.
Okay, great. And then also for the forfeiture funds, we used to get a report of the forfeiture funds and then what they were spent on. Can we get that again?
Yeah, I have a copy from last year. I believe you did sign it, or at least electronically you signed it.
We don't get.
We do that annually in around August or whatever, and then you'll get a copy of that. So I can certainly give you a preview of what we've purchased this year, easily enough. And the formal audit report that we submit in August is available as well.
I guess there's some in your book that says you're going to purchase it from forfeiture funds?
And I anticipate next year, I think we pulled aside three hundred thousand, and not, don't quote me directly, to offset some of the spending that we have to do or ask for the county. It's usually SWAT-related, K-9-related, and equipment-related, those things that we try not to burden the board with.
And so again, if we could just get what you were currently asking for in this budget from those funds?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that you had, how many statutes that you follow?
Well, I listed about thirteen. I think there's more. I was just hitting the ones that make the most sense. There's probably, I could certainly quote the whole sections to you and at least point somebody in that direction if they want to look at them.
Just a listing of them?
Sure.
That always helps, you know, when, again, the governor's wanting a forty percent reduction in property taxes. You all know that, as well as we all know that.
Right.
And so in order for us to look at, and sometimes I don't want to get too caught up in the funded, unfunded mandates, because sometimes the unfunded mandates actually save us money. So a good example is our community corrections. If we didn't have that, everybody would be in the jail. So those kind of programs do save us money, but having those statutes would be helpful as, again, as a board, as we have to look at what they may do at the special session. And of course, it's, in my opinion, it's not going to be over. It's going to carry over into the next legislative session, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Those I listed are the ones, generally, probably ninety percent of them that require a sheriff to take action, actionable ones. There are certainly other statutes that are listed under those that say their sheriff can, or not can, is, these are his, his or her powers. So we skip those because those are just, but you should have the actionable ones that require us to do something, their mandates is what you're, I think what you're looking for.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's an easy lift.
Thank you.
We'll jump to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Rinn, your point, when you mentioned the cars, so you said the county pays for the cars, pays for the cars?
Yes.
And the sheriff pays for the rest. What do you mean by the sheriff pays for the rest? Is that forfeiture fund?
Some of it, if it's a new item or a new, that's a good question. So if it's a newer item or a new program that we're doing, a new type of equipment that's going, we typically will do a first year, if we can, from forfeiture because that's allowable, so we're not supplanting. But if we continue to outfit cars with the same equipment under the same platform, which is advisable, so that they're all identical, you don't want deputies having ten different setups in their car, it's not safe. They need to know where everything is, and the equipment needs to operate the exact same way so that under stress, they can use it and not create an issue. But, so, yeah, and as the cars need built, some of them get replaced, some of them can get in accidents. We can move some equipment over, but generally what we found, as we get through time, the equipment is obsolete or unfunded, or unsupported, even with our maintenance agreements, so we have to upgrade, or becomes damaged in such a way during a wreck that we can't use it. So they're not, not everything, I think I showed you that picture, isn't every year, every time we hire someone, expense, but the vehicles themselves, the laptops, the scanners, the radios, the mobile, the actual framework and stuff that, and the weapons racks, those become purchased by, either through, we try and do it through seizure funds or surplus funds that we've had the year before. And sometimes we'd work in connection with the county garage. When they have surplus funds, they do also occasionally support us by outfitting a few racks for us so that we don't have to incur that expense. It's, we have a very good partnership with the county garage.
Yeah, I'm trying to clarify, so when you say the county pays for the cars, the sheriff office pays for the equipment, though, I'm assuming that's forfeiture, that you all got control of?
Not all of it, no. Usually, what's left over from our non-wage items, that when we're done paying IT, we try diligently to plan for a certain amount of car builds the next year. We, you know, we pull about five new cars a year, whether they get wrecked or not. So we try and plan for new radios, new racks, new DVRs, new scanners, new laptops, and we do that with our non-wage items, preferably in advance. And we try and keep up with it so we're not faced with these full replacement things like we're unfortunately faced with the DVR cameras.
So when you submit to us, okay, the six hundred thousand requests and all the things listed, it's eight hundred, you say down here, the net impact on the budget is six hundred. All those other things you're requesting out of the general fund, that doesn't include the, and so the two fifty extra you're asking for forfeiture is something separate?
Correct.
It's not included in here?
That is correct.
What's it, okay, so everything in the six hundred will be in general fund? And my understanding is forfeiture has some pretty broad strokes for law enforcement, for you all to use it on?
Well, actually, I just, it does have some benefits. However, there was, just in March of this year, there was a supplement put out by the federal government with things we can no longer do with forfeiture funds, one of which is any type of community service activities. We can no longer use it for DOJ for construction. The personnel, I actually investigated using forfeiture funds to pay for a new personnel, and I applied before submitting our budget, and they turned us down. They didn't, did not agree with our argument of why we needed it. So they do keep close, although it's a very helpful. So they do keep close, although it's very helpful, they do still monitor it very closely and they don't give us a blank slate.
So can you send us, before we approve the budget, what the 250 is being used for this year?
I believe it's like 300,000, but yeah, I can send you, in fact, it should be on file with either Sherri Alban, or I can just run the expense report or the revenue report for both Department of Justice and Treasury, and you can get, and make those available to you. What we plan to use it for.
Thank you. Any other questions on this presentation? If not, yes.
Can I just make a quick, keep in mind too, that when it comes to forfeiture funds, you are not allowed to supplant normal budgetary expenses as well. So you cannot say moving forward, we're always going to pay for this equipment, or we're always going to pay for that. You cannot supplant normal operating costs with seized asset expenditures.
Thank you.
And I think I mentioned that, is new programs are easy, new equipment's easy because it's something, it's a one-time, new thing, and if it falls within the parameters, I've never had a problem with that, and I usually ask permission first anyway, just because I don't want to be sanctioned. We don't want to be the county that loses forfeiture access, and that was always taught to me. But I would add that when we pull over monies, and I, we change it every year, it's roughly 250, 300,000, we're not obligated to use it all, we don't lose it. So this year, I think I'm up to 150, 160,000. We have to keep mindful of that because the forfeiture money is not coming in like it did five, 10, 20 years ago. We were getting, you know, million, 2 million, 3 million on Caesars, on the interstate. Currently, they're just moving money differently, and we're having, law enforcement across the nation is having a more difficult time, specifically in the Midwest, bringing that money in at the same rate. Will that change? Probably. These things go in waves, but as of the last three, four, or five years that I've been associated, the money is, if we count on spending 250, 300, that's only going to last until our coffers disappear, and then we're going to be stuck with no ability to use seizure funds.
Sheriff, Chief DePapeleis, thank you so much for the presentation today. We'll be in touch. Thank you so much. All right, let's see here. Mike, can you, give me a second here, if you want to be on deck here, real quick. So we should be okay on time. I'm told that around 1:30 we do need to skedaddle from the chamber due to the upcoming council meeting. We have two presentations, one action item. I want to make sure we get to that action item. So I'm going to go there real quick and then loop back around to our remaining two presentations. Again, I think we'll be fine to cover everything, but just in case, we're going to do that action item real, not real quick, but we'll bring it forward at this moment. I think we have two in the restroom. Long meeting, right? We only, oh, one's over there. Is Mike in the restroom? All right. In the meantime, we're going to get that GIS presentation loaded up as well, because that will be coming up. All right, well, since Mike is out, let's go ahead and jump to that GIS presentation.
This one?
Yep.
Anyone know why we're not getting the TV? People aren't able to watch it while we're just waiting.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
We'll have to find out what's going on.
You guys can talk after the meeting, yeah.
Why did it not come up? I don't understand.
Taking a moment to load up that GIS presentation. Then we'll jump into it.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mike Seanlaw, GIS Administrator, Douglas County GIS Department. I've got a presentation here, it's.
Oh, this mic? Sorry. Like that? Oh, God. Getting sensitive.
Sorry. I've got four slides here. I timed it, it's about a two-hour presentation, so thank you for giving me that time. That's a joke, bad joke. I'm going to keep it pretty simple here. My budget is, the target this year for our expenses was just over $708,000. I'm requesting just over $1 million, which is a big increase for a budget that size, about $308,000. However, I'm also anticipating about $170,000 revenue increase to offset that, which basically means I'm looking for about $139,000 increase to our budget. And I want to explain the main reason for that. First, I want to just give you a quick picture of our distribution, both revenue and expenses. As you can see, most of the revenue for our budget comes from the city of Omaha, a large portion from the county, and a small portion from grant we received through MAPPA. Our expenses this year normally are much higher in payroll, but this year, because of what I'm about to explain, our software component is a lot larger, and the other elements make up less than 10% of our budget. So the primary reason for this budget increase is a enterprise software agreement for GIS software. We, I've been managing this software for both county and city departments for about 19 years now. For every one of those 19 years, our vendor has tried to sell me on an enterprise agreement. City departments have tried to sell me on an enterprise agreement. County departments have asked about it. I've always pushed back because I didn't think it made fiscal sense. I've managed those licenses individually, department by department, invoice by invoice for many years. It does, there is an administrative burden to that, but I feel like we've saved a lot of tax dollars over those years doing it that way. Until now. Finally, the numbers have aligned, I feel, to where investing in this agreement is actually going to make more sense going forward for a number of reasons. Number one, we keep seeing growth in usage. So growth in our own department and what we're doing and supporting for internal city and county departments and the public. We're seeing growth across almost every department that uses GIS and our services. You can see some numbers on the right here, right-hand side of the slide here. We've got currently over 1,100 named users across the county and city. That's just employees. Doesn't include all of our public users. Many businesses, many citizens use our services as well. We're hosting over 150 different websites and apps for different departments. We manage over 1,200 different maps or layers. So there's a lot, we get a lot of value, I think. I think the county and the city get a lot of value for what they invest in our department, for what we do with a small staff of five. So what this agreement would be is basically consolidating all of that spending that's happening department by department, cross-county and city, into one agreement that would fall under our department to manage. I already manage almost all of the licensing as it is, I've been doing that many years, and this would just simplify that into a single invoice, and it would get access to additional software, lots of additional software for city and county departments, which is really, really going to be helpful. One of the reasons that we're very interested in this is we've run very, very lean with our software, and, you know, talking about some of these numbers on the right, all the different databases and websites we support. I'm a penny pincher, notoriously penny pincher when it comes to new servers, new databases, storage, and that kind of thing, and sometimes it comes back to bite us a little bit. And we've, we're growing, kind of bursting at the seams with our spending on that, and so we really need some additional software to help us with that. Software that's going to help us monitor our various systems, software that's going to help us do more analysis, spatial analysis, use AI tools that we've been effectively using for a while now. It's also going to get us additional support. So this agreement will get us a large bank of support hours, technical support from people in our industry through this vendor to help work on projects that we think will help not only improve how departments are doing some of their work, but it has the potential to improve the services they're providing and to even save money in many cases. We've done many, many projects over the years that involve some of these tools, AI and spatial analysis, and we're really excited about harnessing that technology and putting it to the best use, and that's what those support resources will really help us do. One of the other things is we want to be compliant. We're, how do I say it? We're really testing the honor system on using their software. We're, I'm not going to say we're not compliant, because that wouldn't be the right thing to say here, but we would like to be fully compliant, so that would help, this would help us do that. It's also an administrative burden. I mentioned before, there's probably, you know, 50 to 100 invoices and quotes and purchases being made, and that's worked for me, that's worked for the purchasing department, that's worked for the city and county clerks' offices and finance. So there's an administrative gain there as well. The other smaller part of our overage, and I want to talk about that, even though it's proportionally a much smaller portion of our budget increase request, is a new drone. We launched our current drone program about four years ago. Our goal was to do it in a way that was to minimize liability to the county, minimize liability to the city and to our department, be above board and transparent to the public with everything we're doing. We always identify ourselves when we're out there. We make all of our flights available for viewing on a public website. We communicate with 911 before we go out to do any flight, and we capture a lot of imagery doing this. You can see we've already had more than 285 successful flights in those four years. We do a balancing act with the batteries for our drone. They no longer make those batteries, so we have to charge them in the car while we're out there, and it's, it gets a little awkward. And sometimes this is important, and one good example is the recent tornado. As you can see, the image in the upper right there is an image, I think from the Bramblewood subdivision, and that was captured less than 15 hours after the tornado. So we were out there at daybreak capturing that imagery, and that's been really, really useful for a lot of people. Some of the discussion on what the clerk and the assessors' offices are doing is an example of that. So we're really able to get a lot of value out of a small investment with this drone program, and you can see, I listed some of the other things. We do a lot of projects for various departments, and we're very, have a very quick turnaround. So what we're hoping to do is buy some new equipment that'll allow us to do a little bit longer flights. We're hoping to buy a North American-made manufacturer as well, and we're trying to enhance some of that battery life so we can, we can continue this really successful program. So that's the end of my slides. So I just want to say, one thing about my budget is I take my budget very seriously. I am a county taxpayer, as well as a city of Omaha taxpayer. We're fortunate that we have a small department, so I can start my budget at zero every year, which is what I do. I do not have any fluff in my budget whatsoever. I could talk for hours defending every line item, every line item in it to anyone who wants to ask me. So I take it seriously that I have to come up here and ask you for more money, but in doing that, I believe, as a taxpayer myself and as administrator for a department in the county, that this is a good investment for Douglas County and the city of Omaha and its citizens, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We'll go with Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say, I want to say thanks to Mike first, because I guess ever since I first got on the board and saw this capability, I've always been enthralled with the department and what they're doing. I had the privilege about a year ago to be asked to be a part of a artificial intelligence exploratory committee. And part of the research that we were doing and inquiry and trying to set some things up was, I got asked to go to, I got asked, I got asked to go to ESRI. And I got asked to go to ESRI and present on AI and how some things are being used in government. And even though we hear it now in the last year or so, because it's got hot, you know, a lot of it's been embedded in a lot of things that we're doing. So I went up and talked to Mike, and we talked to a presentation that Leah and Jake helped me put together. And Mike showed me something that he was doing with AI, those drones, and the increased one-inch viewing piece that was there. And I was amazed at it, but until I went to ESRI, I really became more amazed. And when I came back from ESRI, I specifically went up to Mike, and I didn't know that other people in the departments were asking, and asked him, you've got to consider putting your budget increase in to do this, because ESRI took me in the room, and what Mike says, he's probably been compliant, but to truth, ESRI's been impressed with what he's been doing. And the example that he did that did not, it's not going to cost jobs, but what he did to increase the efficiency for a couple of projects around here, the handicap accessible stuff, the pools, and if you really spend some time with it and see the potential that it has, actually with the register, with the assessor's office and what it will have in time. They took me in the room, and they showed me all the other things that come with the enterprise subscription. And the addition to what Mike and those guys have the capability of doing, the things that they will give him based on the enterprise decision and the access to some other things, and being a part of the enterprise system will put him in line with them to do some very experimental, cutting-edge things. And so I just want to say thank you to him for making that deal, and I told him I would definitely be backing him and make the case to the board that we had to go do this. And all the years that we've had this, it's been, it's took us to another level and been impressive, and I'm convinced with what they've done and how ESRI feels about the work that they've done and the other tools that they will give them, that it will be more than a benefit in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I have been told that we must evacuate the building due to the tornado warning and the sirens going off. So we will follow direction.
Can I just get a motion to recess?
Motion to recess. Second by Borgeson. Second by Rogers. I'll take direction from a deputy in a second here. First, let's get that vote.
I'll just do a voice vote, we do all voting yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So everybody here will evacuate down to A-level parking garage. I would suggest if you, everybody, you're more than welcome to leave the building if you would like, but once we evacuate down to the parking garage, you cannot come back up. So if you'd like to grab things and leave the building, you are able to do that. However, we'd obviously recommend that you go down into the parking garage until it passes.
Something like that. We're gonna finish, Mike, jump to CM, and then see what else we can squeeze in. Dot com's been so patient that they might hurt me if we don't get to them.
Let me get their...
Motion reconvene.
Wait, hang on one second.
Oh.
And...
Recording in progress.
All right, is there a motion to reconvene? Motion by Bargerson, second by Rogers, please vote.
Are we all voting yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we were wrapping up the GIS presentation and questions. Shkavodan.
I just want to say, as a user of resources, I think you guys do great stuff. I've got some great information right, I think, the day after the tornado, before and after photos of children and parents. We share responsibility with the city, is this shared with the city as well?
Grace?
Yes, yeah, the cities actually would be, the city would be paying for about sixty, it's in the sixty percent range of this increase, so there, all the departments that I've spoken with have given me their thumbs up on this, and they've included in their budgets.
Well, good. You run a lean mean mapping machine up there, and I commend you.
I like the sound of that. Thank you.
There you go, yep.
T-shirts are being printed.
Anybody else on GIS? If not, we're gonna take a quick action item, and then we're gonna call up dot com for their presentation. We're gonna do B1. Jeff, if there may or may not be questions, but just in case, if you want to start walking up here, we're gonna take up B1, the resolution creating a selection committee to review proposals and make a recommendation to the board on the CM at risk committee. This actually was a laid over item from last week to correct putting Director Shari Driver under the staff category. You do have a list of the CM at risk committee proposed members in the resolution itself alongside finding a mental health professional to be on that committee was another thing we had to lay over for, and the director of Region Six has agreed to serve in that capacity. So, do we have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Boyle, questions? If not, we'll vote.
I'm abstaining because I voted against this originally, and I have some problems with procedures, so this is a limited committee answer, but it's a big of a...
Motion passes, Commissioner Kavanagh abstaining, all their commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We shall call up dot com, what is the latest we can be up here, Patrick or anybody?
They're here already, city council people are in the back.
Yep, so, all right. A general short overview, dot com, I'm so sorry that we are rushing you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Derek Cruz, CIO of dot com, I hope you can hear me, you should be getting materials from Dan, I've got Kelly Gray and Brenda Henderson here with me from my staff. I was gonna let Kelly present today, but I'll forego that, and he's really upset about that. Really quickly, I'll skip the agenda, the overview, we are different, and I think you guys know that, obviously, we support city and county, we operate on a calendar year. The budget that we put together goes through our oversight committee, we present a package of financial information and publish it every month, we meet regularly, we're meeting with them in July to approve the budget that you're seeing here. Obviously, that creates a little bit of a mix mash with the county and the cycle that you're on. As a result, we've got a difference of about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we're requesting, that impacts the county in this year. I've been in this job twelve years, I've never had to do this before, I've never had to come and ask for additional funds, and I think the presentations that you just saw kind of say why I'm here, right? Everyone's feeling the same pressure around increased expenses around IT and everything else, and so I will really briefly skip this services chart. This was just, for those of you that aren't familiar with the plethora of things that we do, it's all listed right there. We run a twenty-four by seven shop, we support all of the agencies you've heard from, all the county agencies and all of the city ones as well. A little bit about our historical performance, I bring it up because one of the reasons I haven't had to come ask for additional money in the past is because of what you see in that green box on page five. We've actually used the funding that we got from the CARES Act and our good management of our funding over the last few years to actually supplement things that were approved previously that we paid for out of that under run. And so, we take very seriously, like everyone else you heard here, our budget, we present it every month, we have oversight over every single thing that we do, and we allocate everything back through our cost model to every city and county department. So I think that historical lesson is important, I would have been here two, two, three years ago because of the pandemic and all of the price increases that we saw, but because of good management, we didn't have to do that. We were able to use our surpluses in the past. But like everyone else you've heard from, we have massive contract pressure that we're absorbing ten, twelve, fifteen percent increases in our major expenses. So if we go to chart six, that really shows where we're getting hit. Our professional fees are up in terms of the folks that we use to help assist us, and the biggest piece is in our contracts. As you know, we use Google, we use Microsoft, we use Amazon, all of the big names, which is great. In fact, we pioneered using those vendors eight, ten years ago, which allowed us to... In fact, we pioneered using those vendors eight, 10 years ago, which allowed us to, to enter into some really good and productive agreements. But we're starting to see those increases both from a usage perspective and an overall cost perspective. I want to point out on chart five, six, our total increase year over year is six and a half percent. That's what, that's how I view our, our fiscal year budget on the calendar year. About three and a half of that is organic, that's what we try to stick to, our payroll, the things that are coming through with normal expenses. But we can't contain this additional about 3% that we're seeing from these contracts, et cetera. Chart seven, similar to Mike, we're, you know, we're funded by the county and the city. There's the, the split that you see, the city actually is getting a little bit more of that increase this year. We meet with the mayor and staff tomorrow, they've already indicated that they will approve that increase for 20, our 2025 budget. I know that was really fast and it wasn't a fair representation of, of what we've got going here. But it, I, I do want to reinforce that, you know, this is, you know, based on the target, the county that's, is giving us, that's spread over two years differently than the way we typically manage our budget. But those are the facts, 426,000 above and beyond the target we were given. And we, like I said, present this to our oversight committee, we present a packet of financial data every month. We're very, very focused on making sure that we are transparent and showing exactly where these increases are coming from. Questions, please.
Thanks so much, especially for your patience today and waiting for your turn. We'll do one question from Commissioner Kavanaugh and then we do have to wrap up. I don't want to prohibit anybody from asking questions. So if there are more questions, we can definitely bring them back and put you at the front of the agenda at the next board meeting if there are more questions. So Commissioner Kavanaugh?
You heard me ask the previous witness relative to the shared costs Omaha and Douglas County. You indicate on page eight that the county is asked to come up with 426,024. What's the city's portion?
Yeah, if you go to chart number seven, it shows the total amount coming from the city. That's, that 426 is related to the target we were given, I just want to be very clear on that.
I'm sorry, what is the amount the city's being asked?
It's the, the difference in terms of the year to year increase for the city is 661,000.
So the city is six, sixty-one?
And the county is 671, that's on page seven, those numbers are presented to you.
I'm seeing on page eight, for county fiscal year 2425, this equates to 426.
That's the difference between the target that we were given and the amount that that increase represents.
Okay, in the backup documents that we received, it indicates that your budget request is for 426,024.
Above, above target, that's why we're here because.
That's what you're requesting from us.
We're requesting, you know, actually the total request from the county for dot com altogether added up is 9.3 million. This is the 426 above target.
This is a supplemental request, I'm just trying to find out what is the supplemental request in dollars that you're requesting from us?
This is our budget request for 2025, for your, for your 2025. It's not a supplemental and the total request is 9.3 million.
So on page eight, it says for county FY 2425, this request to 42624 above target. Is that what you're requesting above target?
Yes.
Okay, what are you requesting from the city above target?
They don't issue a target the same way the county does.
You said you're making a presentation to them?
We are, and we, we presented them tomorrow and they're increase year over year, right? So what they'll be seeing from a year to year difference from dot com is about 7.6% different, a total of 661. They don't issue a target the same way that we get from the county.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. All right, we do have to get going here, so I will poll the, the board to see if there were any remaining questions and then get back to you all. Again, thank you so much for your patience, I know you were waiting there quite a long time. Just, yes, Mr. Clerk? Nothing? Good, okay. I do want to note for the record that we did have a weekly personnel report from civil service. I'm sorry, Larry, we do have to wrap up because city council has to set up. Though I may bring that, this topic back as mentioned, we do have a need for executive session, for litigation, contract negotiations and union negotiations. Is there a motion in second for exec session? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, please vote.
Let's do a voice vote, are we all voting yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven to zero.
The board is now going into executive session for the purposes of litigation, contract negotiations and union negotiations.